Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Present.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Your votes?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. There are no recognitions or ceremony proclamations for this meeting, but I would like to make one announcement. There is a public call-in number. It's also posted on the website. Extension 2910. And the password is 2020. I'll make that announcement again later when we get to the public comment. Okay?
Mr. McInley, could you be kind enough to give that one more time, please?
Absolutely. The number itself, 570-825-1776. The extension number that will go to, and the number you need, 2910. And the password is 2020.
Thank you.
I was going to say it's on the webpage. If somebody missed that, they can, if they can pull up the webpage, it's there. But we'll make that announcement again when we get to public comment, okay? We're down to additions and deletions from the voting session agenda.
Addition, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to put forth that ordinance to delay the tax penalty period for loser in county taxes.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Mr. Haas makes that motion. And Mr. Griffith, you second that motion, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anyone else additions or deletions? Okay, let's throw that ordinance to be placed on the agenda. We'll need a roll call. Unfortunately, this, it's hard to see who's voting for what, obviously. Ms. Lawrence, replace the ordinance on the agenda from the previous meeting that we introduced. Mr. Haas made the motion, Mr. Griffith made the second. Roll call on...
Is this to vote on it, to add it to the agenda? Because we do need a public hearing.
Set to the voting agenda.
Okay? Everybody...
Don't we need a public hearing for it before we can vote on it?
Who's speaking?
This is Sharon.
According to our bylaws, correct? According to the charter, no.
Okay, so we're just taking a roll call on adding it then?
Adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Your votes?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
No. It's added to the agenda and will be follow number eight. So it'll become number nine on our agenda, please. Okay? Any other additions or deletions? Do we have a motion to adopt the voting agenda? Yes. Speak up, please. Again, it's hard for me to distinguish who's talking. Please. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Schnee makes the motion.
Okay, Mr. Schnee? Do we have a second for that?
Sheila.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Going down to the next item. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement for a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
From Linda? Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second from Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Moving down to the next item. Motion to suspend bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the manager's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Schnee.
Do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Very good. On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Moving down to public comment on the voting session agenda. Again, I'm going to repeat the call-in number. Extension 2910. Password 2020. Okay, we have a public comment yesterday in their email. We received an email from Mr. Nat in regards to the ordinance that was just added to the agenda. All the council members received that via the common email. And he's in support of extending that. And then the second part was his discussion about money that was set aside for snow removal. We'll, I'll get an answer for that for our next meeting, which will be next Tuesday. Since I don't have that immediately available. Anyone else?
There's a comment in the Q and As on team. Or there's a public comment there.
There is a public comment. It's anonymous. Well, I'll read it. After Wexford gave notice of termination, why wasn't the Correctional Care Incorporated contacted to discuss its response to the fire RFP? Correctional care's pricing and staffing is more favorable than the current proposed contract. And that question will be answered prior to... Unless, Mr. Rakovic, are you on now?
I am, sir.
Did you hear that question?
I did hear the question. We had reissued the RFP. And we had asked for new proposals. And in addition, for any company that had applied previously, if they wanted to just honor their previous proposal, to submit a letter to that effect. We did receive them. We went through. And it's not a matter of strictly price. We have a lot of issues that we're dealing with with this contract. We also had to go with the company we thought was going to provide us the best service in return for what we were spending.
Am I correct in saying they were contacted or they had the opportunity to reply?
It was advertised, sir.
Okay. Anyone else?
There's another comment there. It's unpublished.
Okay.
Brian Kingston?
Okay, on the comment from Brian from Kingston, which I assume is Mr. Shiner. By bylaws amendments need to be approved. Why have we not learned increasing the no laws term from 120 days to 180 days is not the answer? Removing completely, we are not required to keep a provider that does not perform. That is why you have a contract? I assume that's in reference to the healthcare contract for the prison. Mr. Rakovic, do you have an answer to that?
I do. The previous was 120 days. That is the standard answer or the standard contract language for all the providers on both sides. I asked that they extend that to 180 days because of how difficult it was for us to get somebody new at this point in time. They agreed with allowing it to be extended to 180 days from the industry standard 120.
Okay. He has a second part to his comment, which deals with the back taxes in reference to Northeast slash Elite revenue contract. It has been stated that entertaining other companies which responded to the RFP would require an adding or changing ordinances to the Home Rule Charter. Exactly what additions and/or changes would have to be made to accommodate these companies. And I'm not sure who should answer that.
I'll take it, Mr. McInley. It's Brian.
Okay, Brian.
From the proposals, it was more of a collection company. So if you go back to our days of monetization, think of a company coming in to collect the money, which Northeast Revenue obviously does. But it's basically an 800 number. And the way that our ordinances are set up, they wanted their own law firm. Right now, our Office of Law works with Elite, with Northeast. So these are some of the changes that we would have to work out before somebody came in the door. They wanted their law firm to correct it. They wanted to change some of the provisions under which we collect. And that would require time and research on both sides.
Okay. And he has a third comment. I hope every member of the county council votes to approve the elimination of the penalty percentage on this year's real estate taxes or its reduction to zero, whichever is legally appropriate according to the state law. I realize that a 10% penalty is a revenue source for the county. But how can you ask the taxpayers who fund your budget and sustain this government to pay up even more when they are scraping to put food on their tables and buy the basic necessities of life? I think that's for the council at large. Everybody hear those? Everybody able to see those on their screen?
Okay, can I make a comment? It's a public comment. I can't get on the computer.
Yes, you can. Is this Mr. Manta?
Yes, okay, I'm here.
Go ahead.
All right. All right. My feeling for this tax is that you have the people right now down at the very bottom. And a lot of people are going to break under the pressure of having to have to pay for taxes or have to pay for food, medicine, and the general necessity of to sustain life. And my God, this would be such a terrible thing if you don't... I mean, please, I'm begging the council to tell you, look, now is not the time to worry about monies coming into the county. It's time to worry about the people. The people are the ones that are going to elect you people. And the people are the ones, the good people, are going to pay the taxes. And most of the people that are paying the tax right now are in escrow. And this money is already being sent into the county. So my God, people, let the people have a break. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manta. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to first item. Motion to approve the minutes in the March 31st meeting. Do we have a motion?
McDermott, so moved.
Okay, Mr. McDermott?
Griffith, second.
Mr. Griffith, second. On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Any extensions? None heard, motion carries. Moving over to page two, item number two. Motion to remove from table the resolution authorizing the county manager execute a contract with Well Path LLC for inmate healthcare services. Do we have a motion?
We forgot old business.
Kendra?
Excuse me?
We forgot old business.
Yeah, we have it there. There wasn't any old business. Nobody brought anything up.
Well, you didn't ask yet, but I have old business.
And Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Please, you have the microphone.
Okay. I just wanted to know about Resolution 202047. I think I asked the question as to why that resolution was delayed when council adopted that resolution in February 25th. It didn't get signed until Friday of April. The, I think it was last Friday, I believe it was. Could somebody explain what the delay was? Why the council passed that ordinance? And it didn't get through for a month and a half?
No, I don't have... I told you that I would get that, and I will get that for the next meeting. But I haven't had a chance this week because of some of the other things we had to get ready for today.
Well, there was an email that you sent that said that you didn't sign it. You sent it down to Ramilda's office. Is that where it's at?
I don't know. Like I said, I will get that information for you, and I will have it for the next meeting.
I'll speak to that. I'll speak to that. We, I had my assistant, Paula Ratic, review the audio to make sure that all the information on the resolution was correct. You know, it's been, it's been rather hectic, what we're trying to do. So she was able, once the audio was up, she was able to confirm that all the information on the resolution was correct. The county manager and I have attempted, to some degree of success, to coordinate his signing documents. Unfortunately, I was not able to get that document to him until last Friday. So I take full responsibility for the delay. And part of it was I wanted to make sure that the resolution was accurate.
Well, the only question that I have, Mr. McInley, is when we do a resolution and it's adopted by members of council, it becomes binding. And the ability for someone to correct any languages is the clerk's job. I don't understand why it went down to the office of the solicitor.
It was sent to me to review, and we did.
And it was not signed when it was sent to you, correct?
Correct.
And so that leads me to the question as to the procedure that we're supposed to follow in our charter. It says when a resolution is adopted, it's signed by the chair and sent down, sent to the clerk to be posted. And that's not being followed for some reason. And I don't understand why. When I went out there to look for that resolution, I couldn't find it for at least a month and a half. It wasn't even on our website. And until it was actually signed. Now, I understand that there's a lot of things going on. But the question that I have is we have, we're supposed to follow stuff. If council approves a document, it should be posted. It becomes effective immediately. So if it became effective immediately and nobody saw it for a month and a half, that doesn't, that, you know, that's not what the policy is. So I just need to clarify. Maybe we need to put it in the administrative code as to what's the procedure for resolutions and ordinances? Because I don't believe the Office of Law needs to review anything that's duly adopted by council. Once it's adopted, it's adopted. You can't change it anyway.
We were asked to do it, and we did it. And I will, hopefully, if there are resolutions passed today, I will coordinate to get all the documents to the county manager expeditiously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes.
This is Linda Houck. I just have a follow-up question with that. Just procedurally, if the resolution becomes effective six days, usually there's six days after adoption, it would have been in effect anyway, with or without the signatures, correct? Because the six days allows the time for the manager to ask for the reconsideration within five days? So it would have been in effect anyway. So did the actions that were stated in the resolution, did they take place in a timely manner? Because if it was approved on the 25th, it was effective around March 2nd. So did it, did the resolution, actions of the resolution actually go into effect then? Or did they go into effect when it was signed? Anyone?
I don't have...
That it went into effect after the date of passage.
Okay, so the actions that were in the resolution took place?
Right, it was effective.
Okay.
The substance of the resolution was effective.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Right, so the resolution became effective, but the budget transfer didn't happen for a month and a half, is my point. If it was anything else, it wouldn't have happened for a month and a half either. Even though it became effective six days after, as Ms. Houck just said, it should have been, the budget money should have been transferred on this, shortly thereafter. And the only reason it actually happened was because I sent about four emails in asking where the budget transfer was and where the resolution was, because it wasn't even posted on the website. So that's the concern that I have. Those documents are documents that should be on the website as soon as they become effective, even if the manager or anybody doesn't sign it. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
And I have one more, one more item, one more item, Mr. McInley. I sent an email to the manager, and I'm sure he's still online. Is the temporary employee that was hired in the Bureau of Elections, is that, was that person related to Angela Gavlick? That was my question. The answer that I got was she wasn't related to Shelby. But I wanted to know if that was Angela Gavlick's relation that was temporarily hired in the Elections Bureau.
We're not going to talk about personnel matters, but there are no more temporary employees at the Elections Bureau due to the fact that we've had to have these layoffs.
Okay, so silence is affirmation. Thank you.
Moving to number two.
Excuse me.
Motion to remove from table resolution.
Excuse me, Sheila.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith, you're saying that because David was silent, it's affirmed?
Absolutely.
Well, that's...
I never heard of that.
Well, it's Mr. Griffith's opinion.
Well, then a no would be fine.
Are you stating that isn't a legality? Or are you stating that because it's your opinion, Mr. Griffith?
No, I'm saying that if the manager could tell me that there are certain people in the Office of Law that were not related, then he could certainly tell me whether that person was hired... The Bureau of Elections, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's wrong.
If the person hired in the Bureau of Elections was related to Ms. Gavlick or not. The question that was asked to me was told to me by somebody out in the general public, and I don't divulge my sources, was that person was related to Angela Gavlick. I only wanted to confirm that. That's fine if he doesn't want to answer that. That's fine. He has the ability to hire whoever he wants. But he certainly has to follow a personnel policy of how he hires people in the county.
I have no problem with that, Mr. Griffith. I just don't think you can say that it's affirmed. I think that was your answer, what he gave you. And when it comes up again, perhaps that will be an issue. But it's null and void now. It's done.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Sheila, absolutely. And maybe what I could do is I could get the council to approve our Article 2 in the charter. It allows us to do investigations into the hiring practice of the manager.
Why?
Okay, let's move on. That's a personnel issue. Then we have an agenda we have to cover. So let's move to number two, please. We have motion to remove from the table the resolution authorizing the county manager execute a contract with Well Path LLC for the inmate healthcare services.
So moved. Kendra?
Kendra. And do we have a second? Sheila? Thank you. On the question? There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogs?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
We have nine yes and two no.
Okay, motion carries. Moving down to number three. Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager execute a contract with Well Path LLC for inmate healthcare services. Do we have a motion?
Present it. Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do you have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Thank you. On the question?
Walter, question?
Go ahead.
One of the comments that Mr. Shiner put in his statement was to remove it completely in, when he did his public comment on agenda items. The issue, the issue that he was alluding to was just by changing the contract language from 120 days to 180 days doesn't fix the initial problem. The initial problem is, and the reason why I wanted this tabled was because in a termination clause, we don't give the ability for them to just walk away without any penalty at all when we're on the hook to get another vendor. The contract is a contract. So if we have a three-year contract with a vendor, and the vendor doesn't live up to his terms of the contract, then we tell him that he has to either follow the contract or we terminate the contract and litigate the contract, whichever way we need to do that. But the ability for the county to take an out clause that says, hey, you know what? If you guys don't like working here or for whatever reason you decide that you don't like what's going on here and you want to quit, you could quit. You only have 180 days to do it. But there's no penalty involved. I think puts the county in a bad spot on a $3 million or $2 million contract that we're going to have to go out and renegotiate RFP, do all the work that we have to do to get that done without any penalty to the company who just decided to walk away. Now, we just got, and I agree with you, that doesn't happen to this county very often. But when we're talking about a contract as critical as healthcare for the prisoners or at the correctional facility, that puts us in a position where we would not have healthcare for somebody and end up getting litigation against us by inmates or whatever because we haven't provided healthcare. I don't think the ability to give somebody the out clause that they can just walk away from a contract with no penalties involved is a good practice for the county. And I don't think it's a good practice for us to get into with this particular type of contract. The other issue that I have is the language that's in the contract in Section 9.2 that says termination without cause. The language in there says that if they go bankrupt, if they decide not to carry the proper insurance, and if they decide to do something else, I forget what's in the language right there, that that is termination without cause. If they're required to carry $1 million worth of liability insurance If they're required to carry a million dollars worth of liability insurance and they decide they're not going to carry that insurance, we can't say that that's cause. It's in the contract. I think anything you do against the contract is cause. And I just don't think that this contract protects the taxpayers of this county from some vendor who just walks in here and either lowballs the price or decides they don't want to work with the warden or the correctional division or whatever case may be to just say, hey, you know what, we've had enough of this county, we're leaving, and then we're on the hook to get another vendor. That's the second point. And the last point I have is this correctional, this Well Path is the same company that was Correction Care. Even though they changed the name. The issue that I have is Corrections Care just cost this county a bunch of money on a lawsuit that we just paid recently. They didn't cause it. I mean, it was multiple things. But the issue is that we paid a lawsuit just recently from a company that we had as a vendor at the prison, and this is the same company. I have a concern about that. Now, you could say you changed the name and you could go through all of those logistical things that you're going to go through, but I personally don't think it's a good practice for a county to go back to a company who has a track record of hundreds of lawsuits, if you go to the website. The Corrections Cares have lodged against them. I don't think it's a good practice for the county to get involved in a contract like that, and I will be voting no on this contract. Thank you.
I have a question, Sheila.
Go ahead.
First, I was wondering, in terms of this contract, I mean, this is really right up to the nose, right? I mean, we have to have a contract.
Nope. We have a termination date with the other company.
And also, maybe you know Ramilda or somebody from the prison knows, doesn't Well Path, or not Well, Well, not Well Path, Wexford owe us a great deal of money?
You want to answer, Mr. or Mrs.?
This is Ramilda. If I can just intervene. We are reviewing that contract. I would ask that if we discuss any potential litigation, that we set up an executive session so that we can advise counsel in executive session. I do not want to discuss any potential claims publicly.
Okay.
I understand.
That takes care of that part. So then, okay, Mr. Rakovich, and we have two representatives from Well Path, I think, on the team's meeting with us. Who would like to take the questions that Mr. Griffin had? Mr. Rakovich?
I'm available to answer them. Which of his questions?
The first one was about the 180 days versus 120.
Mr. McGinley, this is Vito. I could answer that.
Go ahead.
But the out clauses are really for the benefit of the county. That's a termination for convenience clause. We had been putting those in contracts for years, and they're a way that the county could get out of a contract that is, turns out to not be so favorable with much less risk for litigation. As you could probably understand, in this case, when you have a company that comes in that puts the tremendous amount of resources that you need to put in to execute this type of contract, the likelihood of a company like this backing out within a short period of time is it's very unlikely because of the tremendous amount of cost that goes into executing the contract in the first place. Since we started using these termination for convenience clauses, probably 10 years, over the past 10 years, we've had very, very few situations where Luzerne County has been hurt by them. And generally, the term of the termination for convenience, whether it be 30 days, 60 days, 90, 120, it's usually based on the manager's determination as to how much time would be required for us to go out and get a substitute vendor. So depending on who the contract is with and what the service or supplies that we're getting are, usually the manager makes a determination as to how long it would take to get a replacement vendor. In this case, to believe that this vendor would have come in with the intention to staff a whole staffing for healthcare for the prison, get all the supplies, the logistics, and everything necessary to do it, just to back out on Luzerne County and have us holding the bag, I think is really, it's really way out there. And I think what happened is we probably had a situation where the vendor may have misjudged what the cost would be of providing the service and could not provide.
Vito, Mr. McGinley, I have a question.
Right, who's that?
Mr. Manson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Manson, we don't have a public comment at this point in the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Chair? Mr. Haas, I want to get Mr. Griffin's questions, if I may, and then Mr. Haas, please. Okay?
Thank you.
But in fact, Mr. McGinley, Wexford did back out of the contract, so that theory doesn't apply.
Well, what theory doesn't apply? That's what your thoughts are. Well, for the Well Path, there's a representative or two representatives on. Do you want to talk about the change from Correction Care to Well Path? Omar was one of the gentlemen. I don't know.
Yeah.
Here's your name, please.
Yes, my name is Omar Musalati.
Yes.
Legal Department.
Okay.
I am one of the in-house lawyers with Well Path.
Could you speak louder, sir?
Yes, I am one of the in-house lawyers with Well Path LLC. And, you know, the name change is, you know, was a branding issue, was not to to take away from our history as Correct Care Solutions. I know somebody mentioned we had hundreds of lawsuits, but, you know, when you take into consideration over 300,000 patients almost on a daily basis, you know, the amount of lawsuits does not significantly compare to the amount of patients. Every healthcare provider, you know, does receive some lawsuits in the healthcare industry. And, you know, we have had problems with, you know, we have many great references about the work we do at many of our facilities. And the Well Path LLC is a branding because, you know, we have a family of companies. And with that family, we decided to go with the name Well Path. And we still put in our proposals, Correct Care Solutions, formerly known as, and how we created Well Path. So we, you know, everything about Well Path LLC is about transparency.
Do you, sorry, what kind of insurance coverage does your group have?
You know, definitely leader in the industry there. We're one of the largest correctional healthcare providers in the country, so.
What kind of insurance do you?
We, you know, we provide the insurance required by the county in the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Haas, you had a question?
Yeah, a comment and then followed by a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think Mr. Duluka was very diplomatic in his answer, or his comments rather, about the prior contract. And I remember Mr. Rakovich had two weeks ago or three weeks ago at our last meeting about why why the prior contractor or, you know, prior contractor had with the contract because he was holding the contractor to his, their feet to the fire. And I absolutely trust his judgment, and Mr. Rakovich has proved himself over these past several years here as a manager of the correction facility, which is, you know, 20% of our overall budget, and he's done an admirable job there. I think I agree with Mr. Griffin's questions about the name change and why that was and their history, but I also think too that when you're in that line of work, you do have a lot of lawsuits brought up against a provider, and some of those of us who have been in council for a while, sometimes they percolate through us, and some of them are frivolous, but nonetheless, some do have merit. But I think that happens too. A big issue or a big question is that I asked is, was this the industry standard about exiting the contract? And I don't think I heard an answer for that tonight. I wonder if somebody could answer that for me. And I think that was Griffin's question as well, three weeks ago. Is that normal?
This is Vito. As far as.
Yeah, go ahead.
Termination for convenience clauses are, were not typical in Luzerne County more than 10 years ago. We started doing that really to give the county as much flexibility as possible when it came to holding a vendor's feet to the fire and making sure that we got the performance that we expected. You know, as you could guess, when you have contracts that are only permitted to be terminated for cause, that is basically opening the door to litigation. Because in this case, Mr. Rakovich knew, at least from based on what he was saying, that there may have been some issues with performance, but to quantify that in many cases is extremely difficult, and it's also something that's subject to argument and subject to litigation. So in order to protect the county, we at Legal for years now have been insisting on termination for convenience clauses. Now, the problem with that is, you know, you can't have a termination for convenience clause for the county and not also permit that type of thing generally for the vendor, because then it's not really a contract. If we put out a contract and said, we could cancel a contract with 60 days' notice, but you're locked in for five years, that's technically not a contract. So what we generally try to do is try to balance both sides of that and make sure that Luzerne County has the ability to get out without having to go through litigation when the deal no longer is beneficial to us. And the drawback is, as happened in this case, that every once in a while, you're going to get, we're going to end up in a situation where the vendor leaves. And the vendor's leaving, my suspicion, and I don't know this, but my suspicion is the vendor is leaving because the price they bid is not something that any business would be able to get by on. So in a way, you could look at it that Luzerne County probably was not likely to get the price that we got from any other vendor. And that's why this vendor's going away. So as far as industry standard, whenever you do have a termination for convenience clause, as I said earlier, generally you have the manager make a determination as to how long it would take for the county to be able to get a substitute vendor. What are the costs that would be on the county side for getting a substitute vendor? And in this case, we were at, I guess it was a 120, and whatever Mr. Rakovich believes is the right number to have in there this time, we'll go with that. But there's not a standard for each, we don't put 120 or 180 in every single contract. Some contracts may have 30-day outs.
Is that answer?
It's not industry standard. I think it does be. So it's not industry standard, but perhaps it's a Luzerne County standard. All right, thank you.
Right, and I just want to add, part of the extension to 180 days is the time period in this particular type of contract to have one medical provider replace another. And we saw that with Wexford, and I do have to say, and Mark can probably expand on this, that Well Path during the exit were very cooperative and actually did more than what was required in the previous contract and did more to assist with the transfer to Wexford than they needed to do. I also just want to direct council's attention to the termination for cause terms. If there is a cause, we give reasonable notice what the cause is, and as well, Well Path will give us notice, and they can be rectified. So we're really trying to reduce potential litigation for the county, but yet at the same time, give Mark and the prison system the time and that they need if there is an issue to transfer to another medical provider.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. McGinley. It's Sheila.
Yes, Ms. Sageman, go ahead.
Can I speak to the Wexford lawyer or the Wexford representative?
Yes, the gentleman's name, first name is Omar.
Omar. When we asked the question about Correct Care and Well Passing, you kind of, you were, you kind of gave an answer that I wasn't expecting. It's really the same company then, and what I want to know is the representatives that came from Well Path or Correct Care, actually, in, oh, a year ago to speak to us, were terrible. And I want to know if those representatives are still with the company and are they still management? Because we have three individuals here and none of them could answer our questions.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. I'm not aware of who those representatives were.
Was that the time that we were having some issues at the prison with dealing with suicides? And those were the people who came to the meeting?
Right. Mr. McGinley, it's Mark Rakovich. I am aware that those individuals are no longer with Well Path.
Okay.
They brought in a different management team for this area, and that's who we were dealing with up until December 31st. And it's not the individuals who were here last time.
That's better, Mark, because I thought I was told that as well, but when the lawyer got on and said, you know, we're kind of the same company, we just did it for a branding situation, it kind of left me with the opinion, are those people still the managers that we would deal with?
Mr. McGinley, it's Linda Houck. Linda Houck.
Go ahead.
Okay, my only comment is regarding those, the term termination language where not keeping the required insurance is not with cause. Ramilda, could you address how that would not be an issue of cause?
Mr. Rakovich, did you hear that?
Well, we could always, there's a lot of reasons why companies lose insurance. If they get to that point that they're going to lose insurance, there may be other causes that would actually precipitate a termination of the contract. Here's the reality, if they're responsible for any type of injury to a prisoner, they're on the hook whether they have insurance or not. So if they don't have insurance, they do have to let us know, and we will ask them to cure that. That's part of our ability to ask any vendor if they lose insurance to cure. And we can terminate the contract. Doesn't have to be with cause, we can terminate the contract. Well, I know, but you have a clause there that specifically says that termination for this reason is not with cause. It's not termination with cause. But we still can terminate the, we can still terminate the contract. Matter of fact, it probably would be easier to terminate the contract without cause than with cause. So if they lose their insurance, they give us notice that they lose their insurance, we can terminate the contract. I understand that we can terminate it. I'm just asking why we wouldn't consider that, you know, a serious transgression. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Walter?
Go ahead.
So if we're having this termination for cause or termination for convenience clause in the contract, which I totally disagree with, is then why would we just not, if we're so concerned about the county getting the ability to back out of a contract because we just want to go with another vendor or whatever reason, and we don't want to hold the other vendor accountable as well, why don't we just make one-year contracts with renewals? Why are we making a three-year contract for the way, for the language that's in there? If we're going to have a three-year contract, I'm certainly not in favor of a contract that says termination is voluntary no matter what. Termination for cause and termination without cause, it doesn't make any difference in the contract. If we could just walk away, why even put this language in either way? It doesn't make any sense to put that language in the contract. If you could just walk away regardless, why even differentiate whether it's cause or not cause? It doesn't matter. And it's not industry standard. I mean, the gentleman from Welford, or, yeah, Well, what is it? Well, Well Path, thank you, thank you, Tim. or, yeah, Well, Well, what is it? Well, WellPath, thank you, thank you, Tim, for WellPath, they know what their contracts say in California, at the correction facility in California, and it certainly doesn't give them the termination for convenience there. I, I just, I just don't think that the county taxpayers are being protected with a three-year contract with the vendor able to just pick up and leave for whatever reason. And even in the contract on section 92, termination, it says if they discontinue or abandon operations, is adjudicated for bankruptcy or reorganized under bankruptcy law, or fails to keep and force any insurance, that's all reasons for no cause. So if they decide not to do the work, that's not cause. That's, or abandon operations. If they just pick up one day and say, we're not going to come to the prison anymore, we're not going to do this, that's not cause. That is cause. So I think our, our, our contract is very flawed, and it doesn't protect the taxpayers. You can't, you can't, you can't protect the taxpayers with a contract like this. If they don't do their job, you sue them, just like they would do to the county. And, and for the attorney, for, for the company to say that lawsuits are, are not significant, when you deal with all these patients and only a couple of lawsuits, to the taxpayers of Luzerne County that just shelled out over $100,000 in a lawsuit, I think that's pretty significant.
Anyone else? I should answer one part of that. I, from the time I was chief solicitor back in 2008, until 2013, and then coming forward, Luzerne County executes about 1,100 contracts per year. From a legal perspective, for us to be able to have the ability without any concern about getting sued for arguments over termination for cause is a much greater benefit to Luzerne County and protects the taxpayers of Luzerne County to a much greater extent than not having a termination for convenience clause. So we have this one situation. It has caused inconvenience to us, to Luzerne County, to Mark, his department, have to put it back out for bids. I guarantee you, it has not caused to Luzerne County the degree and magnitude of discomfort economically, financially, logistically, and otherwise that it has to the vendor. And the reason this works for Luzerne County is because in most cases, the vendor will not back out of a contract that's a good deal. So that, what this means is this was a really bad deal for them. To walk away from a contract after whatever couple months, after putting in all the logistical, executing all the logistical activities they had to do, including staffing and supplies and all that, leads me to believe that they seriously underbid the work. As far as why we wouldn't just do single-year contracts with a, that's for the very same reason that I just mentioned. You're not going to have a vendor that's going to come in and put the time and money to staff and supply a endeavor of this magnitude for a one-year contract. So it's a cost-benefit thing. It's really easy with hindsight to say that we shouldn't have had it in this case, but I would still stand by it, and I still stand by the benefit to it, especially when I look at 10 years of 1,100 contracts per year. And this is the one that obviously we would have preferred not to have it. That's all I have to say on that, Paul.
Thank you.
And this is Omar Maslada, the attorney from WellPath.
Yes, what's your first name?
Omar.
Omar, thank you.
Omar Maslada. Yes, and I would like to, I heard that it wasn't an industry standard to have a mutual termination for convenience, and that is not the case. You know, the vast majority of our contracts have that, because as was mentioned, there is a vast amount of resources that go into a contract. And, you know, if there's any issues, you know, we, we have the, the mutual right to terminate, and we give appropriate notice. And for Wexford, you know, they're going to have to report now, and the rest of their proposals, you know, have you ever terminated a contract? And they're going to have to list, you know, Luzerne County as one of those items. You know, WellPath has, has never sent a notice of termination for convenience, and, you know, and that's quick of a period. And we have a history, and we report anytime that we do something like that in our proposals, that's a common RFP requirement disclosure. And you'll see that is not something that, that we do very often.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, could I ask Omar how many times they've exercised that clause?
Yeah.
WellPath, either as WellPath or as Correctional Care. How many times have you exercised that option in the contract?
Trying to pull up our proposal. You know, I don't have the number memorized, but I do know that we disclosed that.
You disclosed this part?
And it would have included Correct Care Solutions as well, of course, in the proposal.
Do you have that information?
I'm trying to pull it up. I don't know how quick.
All right. Anyone else in the interim, while the gentleman's trying to research that?
Well, it's Sheila again, Tim, and I just want to say, I, I just want to say, you know, sometimes you don't bargain from the strongest position. I mean, as a bank attorney, I had strength over any of the people that came in as lenders. We are not in this terrific situation this time, but we don't really have any choice. We're backed up against the wall. So I think voting no is just as much a, a problem for the taxpayers, if not more, because then we won't have people covered in the prison.
Thank you.
What did we do, what did we do in the past? Did we not have independent?
Excuse me one second. Omar, were you able to get that number? Omar?
I have not, and, you know, I, I don't think that's something we would want to disclose publicly. That's usually something that we, we provide in our proposals for the county to consider, you know, on a confidential basis.
So, so you won't, so you won't disclose how many times you've used that contract clause?
I think what the gentleman said, Mr. Griffith, said it's part of the proposal. And the proposals are, were here and still are here in the county officer.
Okay, well, that's not, that's not very open for the council to decide. If they've done it more times, we need to know, but, you know.
I understand that, but that, that's, I'm telling you what's available. I can't change it at this point. Sorry. Anyone else?
What have we done in the past before we use these vendors? Did we use independent contractors, like dentists and things like that? Was it, did we look at the cost factor regarding maybe having independent doctors do the work that we have in WellPath do? That's what we used to do in commissioner days, correct?
I can't respond to that. I don't know what they did. Maybe Mr. DeLuca would know that. I do not recall. I believe we had, may have had our, certain of those services were employees of the county, but I, I don't recall.
Didn't we use, to use Mr. Carpenter for the dentistry? And, and we had a couple of medical doctors that used to go over to the prison back when the commissioners were running the county?
I, I do, I, I do recall something like that, but I have no idea whether or not, my impression was that, that we went to this complete, all-in-one sort of system, because when you, when you are doing that stuff in-house, it's, there are a lot of costs that having a third party come in and be able to handle it all together, they get the benefit of scale and, and they're able to do it cheaper. But I really don't know. I'd have to ask someone who's been, actually had the prison system and knows that.
Mr. Griffith, this is Sheila. I think they might have used dentists or an optometrist or anything individually. But in terms of, at least I know in terms of mental health services, it was, the county had a program, even though there were individual, like, was an individual psychiatrist for them, and they had nurses that were trained in that area, but it was still under the county.
Okay.
The other thing I, I remember at the very beginning of Home Rule, Geisinger was the provider for medical services.
Right, right.
Back in 2012 or 11 in that timeframe. Okay, that's all I, I have information on. Anyone else?
Well, I would, like I said, in closing, I would say, I would encourage a no vote on this contract. I don't think that this contract's in the best interest of the county. Thank you.
Well, I understand that, but I do respect the opinion of Mr. DeLuca and his experience with this. And I think that Mr. Rakovich and his staff there have shown the leadership and the experience to be able to deal with performance issues. And I think that, you know, they're the ones that deal with it every day, and I respect the, the recommendation. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McGinley, before I do that, can I just reconfirm your vote on the taking it off the table? Was that a yes?
I'll talk about that afterwards, please.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving down to number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving a contract with Elite Revenue Solutions LLC for the collection of delinquent real estate tax services. And Mr. Shemani is on the line with us. Do we have a motion?
Present it.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, we have it.
Who's that?
Paris.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the question?
Oh, question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
Yeah, Harry Haas here. Last meeting, I asked if we could see the other applications for their RFP, and I've never got the information.
Well, again, they've been sitting here in the council office, probably since February 20th or 24th.
Okay, I mean, I would have been happy to do that, but I.
Yeah, I, I think that was the information that was provided. They would be available here, and they have been. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, Walter?
Go ahead.
On Northeast Revenue, what was the purpose of changing the name from Northeast, well, from Northeast Revenue to Elite Revenue? If Mr. Shemani could ask, answer that question for me?
Your only question, Walter, for him?
Uh, no, I have, I have a plethora of questions for him.
Okay, let's try to get them, so we could get them answered all, all together.
Okay.
Mr. Shemani, did you hear the question about the change of the name?
I did, yes, thank you.
Would you want to respond to that first?
Absolutely. Mr. Griffith, the, as I think I, I believe I indicated when I gave the presentation, it was for the ownership structure of our company had changed.
So it really didn't have anything to do with the fact that Northeast Revenue was getting some bad publicity from the court right case and Lehigh County and all that? Had nothing to do with it?
Well, it's a combination of going out and marketing under a new name and with getting the old ownership away from our company.
So, so if that was the idea, then why is Northeast Revenue still the name of the company?
Well, well, we're kind of caught in the middle of a pandemic here. What we had anticipated was, we were supposed to be on the agenda, I believe it was back in the beginning of March. And when, when we got approved, you know, we have signs that are made, we have letterhead that's out there, we have all that stuff in the pipeline. However, everybody got shut down, and we could not make those necessary adjustments. It is a, it is a process. It's not something that we're going to be able to open up the door tomorrow, because the company to unwind that is a process, and that's the purpose behind that.
So you can't just?
Unfortunately, our hands are tied with a lot of the companies and the businesses that are shut down right now.
So Northeast Revenue, when they changed the name to Elite, well, Elite, Elite went into corporation on December 31st of 2019, they couldn't obviously just change the name of Northeast Revenue to Elite at that point?
Well, we didn't have a contract under Elite at that time. So you understand where we were coming from, Mr. Griffith.
Right. So are you planning on changing the name from Northeast to Elite?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay. And then the, the other question that I have is, I was looking through some of the, I got a lot of the campaign finance stuff for Rogers and a couple other folks along the way with this Northeast Revenue connection, and, and I'm a little bit concerned. There was a lot of, there's a, there's a political action committee called Northeast Leadership Fund. Are you familiar with that fund?
I am, yes.
Okay. Northeast Leadership Fund got about $8,000 from yourself, Mr. Rogers, and Bruce Phillips, as recently as last year. And, and they gave a check to Tim McGinley's campaign in October of this year of 19 as well, for $1,000. And I just wanted to know what the connection is, if there's any, from that political action committee and yourself with Rogers and, and Bruce Phillips, obviously who's passed away. But what's the, I'm, I'm just kind of concerned about the appearance that we're getting into here. So if you could address that?
Absolutely. There's no connection that I'm aware of. I did play in a golf tournament once a year. I have not played the last two years in that tournament, but I have donated as a sponsor. It is a, a pact of Democrats, Republicans, independents within Northeast Pennsylvania. And I have no control over how that money gets allocated. I just donate it going to the golf tournament, which is usually held in August.
No, and I, and I certainly appreciate that, Sean. And I, I do say Northeast Revenue has done a pretty good job for the county as far as all, through all the years that they've been collecting taxes. I don't know of any issue other than the one that we're having right now with the repository. That's, that's obviously an issue right now. But over the years, I don't think Northeast Revenue really has done anything that, you know, in Luzerne County that would, you know, be an issue for me, other than the fact that, you know, like I said, there's a, seems to be an awful lot of money. That Northeast Leadership Fund is a powerful, powerful political action committee, and they give money to a lot of people. In fact, there's members of council that contributed to that last year, but didn't get any money. But Mr. McGinley didn't contribute any money, and he got $1,000 in October. So I, I just didn't want to, I want to make sure that we're clear on what's going, you know. Now, I'm not saying there's anything going on. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what's, you know, what the tie-in is between all of these companies. I'm certainly hoping that Northeast Revenue has no problems with the, with any more investigations as far as what's happening with tax collection from, you know, from Rogers and all those. And I, and I certainly can appreciate your stance on that. So if you could just, and the last question I have, Sean, for you, is if you could answer the question as to why the repository issue that we're having in Luzerne County isn't the same issue that Lehigh County's having. I know that was a concern, that Lehigh County's repository properties, they don't have a problem with that. They get assessed at the purchase price. But in Luzerne County, that's not the case.
Yeah, and that is an ongoing issue. Ramilda, myself, Nadine, we met with the assessor's office, and we're trying to take steps moving forward to adopt whatever policy, you know, is in the best interest of the county here in Luzerne County to move forward with ongoing repositories.
But, but it's not a policy of the county. It's, it's the state law that says what you're It's, it's the state law that says what you're supposed to do, correct?
I, I believe, I believe that is the case.
So why is not Northeast Revenue following the state law?
Because the state law is not clear, that, the state law says that the, it is, it determines the fair market value. And fair market value is not necessarily the assessed value. I met with, with the assessor's office and with Mr. Shimani. I have been discussing this issue with attorney Dave Schwager. And we will have an opinion based on all of those meetings and the research of the law, hopefully within the next month.
Okay. Other questions?
Uh, Steve Urban, just a quick question here.
Go ahead.
Um, if we wanted to put a ordinance or a resolution in place to clarify that policy, could council take action on that to, to help that along?
I think that's a question for the solicitor's office?
Yes.
I don't know what particulars you're putting into the ordinance. So, you know, if you want to work with us, with what type of...
Well, what I'm saying, could, could council add direction by stating whether or not the property goes by assessed value or fair market value? In other words, when, when a repository property gets sold, that we just solidify which, which value gets, gets put into the system and, and then is billed out, you know, as taxable?
This is Dave Pedd. Can I jump in on this one real quickly?
Go ahead.
Uh, could I just recommend that we let the solicitor's office do their, their work and their research? We may all be on the same page, depending of their, of their review. We sit down with that opinion, and then we come back to county council and say, this is where we're going. And if you don't like that, then we can maybe talk about changing an ordinance or a resolution or something along those lines. But let's let the solicitor's office do their review and get that done. And then, once that's completed, we'll come back to county council, say either we changed our policy or we're keeping the policy based upon the following reasons, and then take, take the steps from there. Because, you know, if, if Ramilda changes her, changes the view of the, the county on this, or if I, if I change my decision on this based upon the legal review, we may all be on the same page, and we can move forward quickly.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
One question.
Go ahead.
The last 35 to 40 years, I've had a special privilege of knowing the Shimani family from Mr. Shimani, who passed on, that he gave the values to his three kids. I had the privilege of coaching two of them when I was assistant football coach at Hazleton. He always, the values that he taught those three kids of being a family, going to church every day on a Sunday, and just doing the right things in life and not disrespecting the family name. And his generosity to the Hazleton community from Holy Family School, MPB Church, Little Leagues, and on and on, that whenever people needed assistance, and Mr. Shimani has been there, and they were values that were brought down from his mother and father. And again, I have the privilege of knowing those people. And I, I'd, I'd do whatever I have to do to back to Shimani because I know the quality of people that they are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schnee, second by Mr. Perry, to have, to adopt the resolution approving a contract with Elite Revenue Solutions LLC. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstention, didn't get to see the other offers.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Howk?
No.
McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, four no, one abstention.
Motion carries. Moving down to number five. Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager execute the lease agreement between Luzerne County and Elite Revenue Services LLC. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second? Ms. Sedman? Very good. On the question? Perry, non-roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain, didn't get to see the other offers.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving down to number six. Motion to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy on Luzerne County Children and Youth Advisory Board. Do you have a copy of the letter that was received from Mr. Flynn? Do we have a motion?
Don't move, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second? Second, please.
Second, Walter.
Very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Going down to number seven. We have a motion to amend the Luzerne County Bylaws, Rule 1D. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Ms. Howk, do we have a second?
Walter.
Okay. On the question? Ms. Howk, do you want to speak to that?
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It removes the issue of where an elected official could be prevented from participating in the meeting. Currently, we require, if it's the third telephone participation, a vote of council to allow the person to participate. And as we discussed with Mr. DeLuca earlier in the spring, that's really not something we should be doing. So this removes the need for someone to request permission from the chair as well as to request permission from council members to participate by telephone if it's not...
Okay, everybody? Any questions?
Yes, Sheila. I have a question just in general, Linda. Linda, what's, who's on this committee?
On what committee, Sheila?
Is for, for the amendments?
Well, these, these are amendments that I just brought forth after the, the first couple meetings that we had. And Mr. DeLuca raised the question of whether we could actually prohibit someone from participating. I brought these myself as an individual council member.
Okay. So that's really what I wanted to know, if there was a committee that was adding amendments as they sought it, or if it was just you individually? And...
Well, we don't, Sheila, we don't at the moment have a bylaws committee. I guess they could come through the code review committee, but we've been working our way through the administrative code right now. I don't think that the bylaws were assigned to anyone in particular. And in the past, we pretty much had the bylaws amended, with the exception of, I think, two years ago, Mr. McGinley, you had a bylaws committee that met.
Yes, I think you appointed a bylaws committee that met and went through the whole document of the bylaws and came back to council with recommendations.
Yep, but previous to that, we did not actually have a bylaws committee. Back in 2012, I essentially wrote the bylaws, and we went through them as the council. And then a few years later, Mr. Morelli gave us a whole new set of bylaws, and they came from him, himself, I guess. But the last time we had a committee that actually looked at the bylaws was a few years ago.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, this is Vito. I mean, I, I don't believe, I spoke to Ramilda. I don't believe this went through the Office of Law for review. I mean, as I, I know that I brought up a number of issues that just were to, to address. One of the major issues I had was with Section, Rule 1D, subsection nine, that I believe said that the chair could declare the, the members' participation null and void.
I don't think the chair, but that, go ahead, Vito, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I don't want to have anyone have the wrong impression. I'm, I've confirmed that through discussion with Ramilda that, that this was not reviewed, did not go through legal review, so...
I sent them to you. I sent the amendments to you. We discussed them, and you made one, you said you thought they were good, but with one change, and you thought, and it dealt with the next part of the, of the change, which was the nominations part. I sent these, you know, if I have to find the email...
That is absolutely not true.
If I have to find the email and send you the email, I will.
I had an informal conversation where I said, hey, I received your email where you had tied up some loose ends as far as the appointment for vacancies. I didn't mention anything at all about the telephonic media appearance. And I was under the impression...
And then we discussed them.
Excuse me, let, let Mr. DeLuca finish, then Ms. Howk have a...
I was under the impression that this was going to go through committee, and that after it was out of committee, there would be a legal review. Our conversation for two minutes before we were starting an executive session, I think it was, does not qualify as a legal review. I, I'm certain that Ramilda would not find that to be an adequate legal review. And I'm telling you that as I look at these, as I sit here, there are still other issues with the appearance via teleconference that, that do not comply with state law prior to the pandemic. And even as we're in flux right now, and, and we just had a amendments to the Sunshine Act approved yesterday and signed by the governor, we don't even know to what extent these will comply with state law as regulations and as the Office of Open Records comes out with other guidance. So I don't want council to have the impression that I reviewed these on behalf of the Office of Law and that I approved them, because I did not.
But you sat in the work session where we discussed them.
I did.
And your emails come under review. And, you know, you're the guy who says all the time, I need some advance notice. Well, you've had them since February what? You know, and so you're telling me that when we had a full discussion about this in the work session, you didn't take a look at them and say, oh, wait, maybe I better look at these? Maybe they better go to a committee? They never went back to a committee because they were never sent back. We discussed them as a group in the work session. And you sat there and nodded and agreed with them.
That's, that's not true. That's absolutely not true.
If I can just, if I could just intervene, because there are flurries of emails going back and forth, and this debate is going on. I want to be clear about this. My, I discuss matters with my assistant solicitors all the time. And I do not dictate positions, but I take responsibility for them. And as it stands right now, these amendments, whether they're eventually passed or not, were not vetted, they weren't reviewed, and they were, were not approved by anyone in the Office of Law. I want to be clear about that. That a series of emails and conversations are not the standard that the Office of Law uses to review any document. So my suggestion is, and I hope that council members listen to the audio of the February 25th meeting. These amendments were going back to a committee. Now, Councilwoman Howk is right. A definite committee was not assigned. But logic dictates that the committee that should review these amendments is the code committee. And once those amendments and changes are done, the whole document should be passed on to the Office of Law, and we will do a review. There are a lot of issues out there. One of them, especially with the vacancy issue, the amendments that are set forth probably solves the problem that we faced at the beginning of this year. But there's many other scenarios out there that we need to address. So if we're going to change that, it would behoove everyone if we review multiple scenarios and come up with as many corrections as possible. That's the most efficient and prudent way. But I want to be clear with council members. You can speak to my assistants. I encourage it. But speaking to them is not approval of anything. I take their recommendations, I review it, we discuss it, and I take responsibility for that recommendation. I want to be clear. So council, you have the right to reject our opinion. Attorney DeLuca and I are both saying that this matter should be reviewed by the committee and then vetted and discussed and reviewed by the Office of Law. You can ignore that advice. I hope you don't, but you certainly have the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
Speaking, go ahead. Someone?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
So the Office of Law reviewed these codes that were under right now the county bylaws and said that they were okay. And now, and now we want to make...
There's a difference of opinion on that, Mr. Griffith, but...
Well, I mean, that, that's what happened when they were drafted, correct? Did the Office of Law review them before we adopted them the first time?
Yes.
So then how could the Office of Law put in our bylaws that an elected official's vote can be voided? If they reviewed it?
Mr. Griffith, I wasn't...
I don't have an answer for that part, but yes, it was reviewed. That was...
I, I wasn't here when, when, when the, the bylaws or any of the codes were drafted or reviewed. But as the chief county solicitor right now, it is the policy of our office to review those documents, vet them, and give a legal opinion as to those documents. There may have been an opinion given by the Office of Law that you can't do that in the bylaws. And perhaps council voted for it anyway. All I am asking is that you give us an opportunity to review these documents and work with you, all of you, to get the best document... and work with you, all of you, to get the best document that we can possibly publish and use. This is a great time to review all of the policies and the codes. We have a history now. We know what potentially might come up. But for this particular, these particular amendments, I want all council members to be clear on this. They were not vetted, reviewed, or approved by the Office of Law.
Well, these were reviewed and adopted in 2017. If I look at the cover sheet, right, you were in the Office of Law then, were you not? These bylaws, we reviewed these in 2017.
The dates are there, you're 17?
Yes, there were discussions. And Mr. Griffith, I can tell you, there are numerous times when members of the Office of Law, including myself, give recommendations and they're not followed. So I can't control that. The Office of Law is not a court of law. We're your lawyers, we give you advice, we counsel you, we give you the scenario and what the consequences are for your actions. You accept them or you reject them.
So is this the first time that anybody from the Office of Law is looking at Ms. Halk's bylaw change that was proposed since February? That there was no, there's not been an issue sent to Ms. Halk about, well, jeez, we don't think that this part that you're trying to amend is correct legally, we need to do something different?
I think needs to be done, to be absolutely honest with you, is that these amendments, or any amendments, or any changes, and if you go back to the audio of February 25th, Councilman Urban had made suggestions, Councilwoman Rado had made suggestions. I think they need to be sent to a committee and reviewed and not done piecemeal. It's very difficult to organize and make assessments based on emails and conversations coming from all different directions. We need to get your guidance, meaning counsel's guidance, meaning the committee's guidance. And we will work with you to advise you whether your suggestions are approved or not. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Is there a problem with the amendment that she's proposing?
I think with the vacancy amendment, there are other scenarios that need to be addressed or even debated and discussed. Those amendments make sure what happened at the beginning of the year, but they don't cure all potential scenarios that might come up in the future. And if we can discuss them, I believe we can come to a better document that can be used and a better policy and a better procedure so that there isn't confusion, that it's clear. How many times do we have a debate on what a word means? We do this all the time, Councilman Griffith, and I wish we wouldn't have to do it. So perhaps we need to define terms. You know, that's just one suggestion that I'm throwing out there. We will work with you. You just have to give us the opportunity to do it.
Anyone else?
Well, if nobody else has something to say.
Wait a minute, Mr. Snee has a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Snee.
Motion to table.
Mr. Snee has a motion to table. Do we have a second for Mr. Snee? I'll second that. Just to get it off, we'll move one way or the other here. Motion to table, there's no further discussion. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence. Motion to table, number seven, which is a motion to amend the bylaws, Rule 1D.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Motion to table, yes. Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Halk?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Motion to table passes. Very good, moving down to number eight. Motion to amend Luzern County Council bylaws, Rule 8F. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Halk?
Motion to table.
We didn't have any discussion yet.
That doesn't have to happen, Mr. Griffith.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
No, the motion to table has no discussion.
No discussion with table.
We haven't had discussion on the original motion yet.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
You haven't had discussion on the original motion yet.
Do we have a second to that?
Everybody has to have an opportunity to speak on the motion first.
You'll have an opportunity after we go through this motion. Motion to the table, Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Legal opinion, please. Legal opinion, please. I'm asking for a legal opinion. Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, when there's a motion made and seconded, there has to be discussion before you can table.
Just give me, I need to pull up the bylaws, I want to give you the actual language from the bylaws.
No, it's in Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure.
They only apply when it's not covered in the bylaws.
That's correct.
And it's not covered in the bylaws.
Motion to table. Motion to table may not interrupt a speaker, second required, not debatable, not amendable. Majority vote required.
That's on the motion to table. I'm talking about the original motion.
If any, this is under disposal of motions.
But the original motion has to have discussion before you can table it. You can't table something you don't know what the discussion is first.
We have. Motion practice.
Because you don't know what the, you don't even know what the thing's about until you discuss it first and then you can table it.
Meeting conduct motions. We have point of privilege, may interrupt. Point of procedure, may interrupt. To recess meeting, may not interrupt a speaker.
Okay. So we have a motion for Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Yes, Sheila.
Or do we need our own attorney?
I'm reading from the bylaws, Mr. Griffith, maybe this is an issue that we need to address.
No, Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure you read from for items that are not addressed in the bylaws.
Excuse me, no discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm raising a point of order, Mr. McGinley, that is able to interrupt the speaker.
No discussion.
I am raising a point of order. I'm raising a point of order. I have every right to raise a point of order.
And you did, and you had an answer to that.
And I'm waiting for clarification on my point of order regarding the original motion.
You did get clarification.
Not on the original motion, I did not.
I think you did.
There's no debate when there's a motion to table.
But my question, my point of order is you cannot make a motion to table without having discussion on the original motion.
Mr. McGinley, I made my opinion. I give, I continue.
Okay, we have a motion to table, Mr. Snee, second, Ms. Sedman. Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
There are no Harmones speaking about this for a few minutes, absolutely not.
Ms. Halk?
No.
McDermott?
Yes, but we really need to handle these. I mean, it keeps getting pushed off.
Mr. McGinley?
Yep.
Mr. Perry?
That's the whole point.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay. Moving down to number nine, this is the addition to the agenda. It's the ordinance regarding the tax face penalty, the 10%, moving the date from June 17th to December 31st. Am I correct, Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Haas, actually, move, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you made the motion, put it on the table, but Mr. Griffith.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, that's correct. Okay, everybody clear on that?
It was the ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting.
Correct. Are you making the motion and introduce the motion for the ordinance, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, I am.
Second. Mr. Haas?
I'd like to make an amendment to Vog.
Who's speaking?
Matt Vog, I'd like to make an amendment.
Very good, amendment, go ahead, Mr. Vog.
I'd like to amend the deadline to August 18th instead, 60-day extension. We can always re-extend it if we have to. But this still provides needed leeway to the taxpayers, but still allows the county to pay for essential services that we need to provide.
Mr. Vog, you made that amendment. Do we have a second for Mr. Vog's amendment?
Second, Kendra.
Very good. On the amendment.
On the amendment, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, one second, please. Which would change the deadline date to August 18th, am I correct, Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Okay, on the question to that amendment, please. Mr. Haas, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, two, comment and a question. Number one, again, the whole spirit of this entire ordinance is just for county taxes, does not influence school property taxes or municipal, because I think we've all gotten some emails supporting this and opposing this. But just to make sure that's clear on whatever amendments were put forth. Secondly, regarding that, I appreciate the amendment, but I wonder if we could have just a status report from Mr. Swets about exactly what our cash flow is and maybe of a more trend about where we get our revenues, because I think that's the concern, the cash flow. But if the taxpayers don't have money to give, the cash flow stops anyway. So if we could hear from that, I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, we'll have Mrs. Swets make a comment before we get to that. Is there any other questions?
Sheila, question.
Yes.
Sheila, question. Similar to Harry. If we extend it either to the 18th or to December 31st, what is the loss in revenue for the county?
We can ask that question, Mr. Swets. He'll be on shortly with his opportunity. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, it's Kendra.
Yes.
My question or statement would be that if we do approve the amendment and if, when it gets closer to August, if we're in like this pandemic state, essentially extend it further, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, but Mr. Dulick or Ms. Crockmoor? Did you hear that question?
Yes, we're talking about the extension of the face value.
The amendment is to extend it to August 18th?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Would be as we get closer to that timeframe, depending on the pandemic, can we add or extend it again?
There's no provision in the Senate Bill 841 that the governor signed that says that it is only, you know, can only vote on it once. It just gives the local municipalities and the counties options of what they may do to extend certain deadlines.
Mr. Rado, you hear that? I'd like to answer your question.
Yes, thank you.
You can extend the face, you can extend the discount. I know other counties have extended the face value. For example, Berks County extended it to September. But most other counties are extending the face value until August. And some, I think Blair County didn't at all.
Okay. Other questions?
Tim, this is Vito, real quick, and going back and forth on this. And obviously, this was signed by the governor yesterday. I agree with her that I think we could extend it through the August date. Just so we're all on the same page, though, the statute actually says that the tax is payable by December 31st, 2020. Whether or not we're in absolute, complete compliance with it will be a question that we'll have to get maybe some guidance on. But I know, as Ramilda said, there were other counties that have extended the face date. The statute, though, reads, it's not completely clear. That's all I wanted to go on record.
It is a little awkward, but I do know that other counties are extending the face date. Crawford extended, Blair did not, Lancaster will not because they need to get all the municipalities to agree. And as I said, Berks extended it to September 30th.
Okay, other questions?
Right, if I could, Mr. Chair, as I read the statute, it was just passed yesterday. It extends the face, in other words, the period without penalty, the 31st of the set. But it also offers to extend the discount period in August 31st.
Yes.
So that would be a 2%. So just to be very clear, which I would totally support that well, and I'll give my reason on that as well because the cash flow is the problem that we're working with. That will provide some extra incentive for people who could stretch and pay their taxes to get them in in a timely fashion, because the argument, give the people that option as well. And then I think get more revenue coming in, but at the same time, allow taxpayers a break. Now, the only concern I have with that part is it might be difficult, since we're out of the discount period, and I'd like to hear about that, too, how we go about actually collecting that with our tax collectors and also with our own treasurer. And so, again, it's part of the discussion, kind of part of this amendment.
It's not part of this particular ordinance that has been submitted.
Right, we would also, just as a point of information, there is, are issues. I mean, it would have to be retroactive at this point. So that is another area where it's still gray.
Okay. Anyone else?
So are we? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Leanne, I'm sorry.
Okay, so are we talking about extending the discount to August, what Mr. Vog had said, or just?
Oh, the ordinance is the face value.
The amount due, due from the property owner. The original ordinance that Walter brought forth in is August 31st. Matt wants to change the date to August 18th. That's what the amendment is talking about.
Walter?
First of all, I spoke to C cap yesterday. They said, they said the definition of the law says that you cannot make a date certain, it has to go till December 31st. That's their interpretation. Now, if the county wants to do something different, that's entirely up to them. But the statute in 5712 definitions clearly says, under tax relief, that you can either collect the tax at the taxing district's prescribed discount rate, if any, no later than August 31st, or you can waive any fee or penalty otherwise associated with the late payment of the tax if paid in full by December 31st. You cannot set a date certain like Mr. Vog wants to amend. That's the first question. The second question is, I happened to be on the call yesterday with Nanticoke City with Bill Finnegan and the county and the city council, and they were told that my ordinance says that we and they were told that my ordinance says that we were going to extend this, this ordinance, change our ordinance to August 31st. And he said he got that information from the Office of Law of Luzerne County. That's clearly not what my ordinance says. So I would like to know how Mr. Finnegan got the wrong information, or was this already prescribed that we were going to change my ordinance to August 31st before this meeting? That's the second question.
I'll answer that. I had discussions with Attorney Finnegan, and I was speaking to the prospect of Senate Bill 841 about the options. When I spoke to Attorney Finnegan, the governor had not signed the bill. And I said that if he doesn't sign it, you know, the ordinance, there's not really many options that the county has. So it was probably a misunderstanding, but I was speaking to Senate Bill 841, not your ordinance.
He was very, he was very specific, Ramilda, when he told me.
I know. He spoke to him about it.
Right. He told me specifically that when he spoke to you the other day, which wasn't too long ago, the reason they put that resolution on their agenda was, he was told by you that my ordinance said that we were going to extend the discount, the face value until August. And I said, that is not what my ordinance says.
I'll talk to Attorney Finnegan. I did talk to him yesterday, and really, it was in the context of Senate Bill 841 and about the options that the county had. I said to him, the numbers matter. I don't know the numbers. And I also said, you know, we have, we still will have issues with the municipalities collecting taxes. So it was a very, you know, we discussed a lot of things in the conversation, but I was speaking to Senate Bill 841.
That, and I mean, quite honestly, this ordinance has nothing to do with municipalities at all. The only issue it has with municipalities is the fact that people can say that I'm not going to pay my county tax until December 31st. Consequently, the municipality won't get their money either. That's the only connection. The municipalities can still collect their penalty phase if they don't change their rule. That's exactly what the ordinance says.
Well, they can, absolutely. You're right. And we talked about that, and we talked.
So to the amendment, right, so to the amendment, you cannot change this by amendment to a date certain, according to what the statute says in Act 841. But more importantly, you can't change my ordinance. You can't amend my ordinance to say something totally different than what I designed that ordinance to say. That ordinance says we're taking the penalty phase from 10% to zero. It says nothing about extending a rebate period or phase period, nothing. You'll have to vote this ordinance down, and then you'll have to present your own ordinance. You can't change my ordinance to say something different than what I proposed. That's just not possible. The charter doesn't allow it, and I'm not going to allow it either. I drafted an ordinance that says I want the penalty reduced from 10% to zero until December 31st. You cannot amend it unless you want to change it and say, we want the penalty to go from 10% to 10, to six or five. You can change it that way, because that's within the original content of the ordinance. But you can't just change it to whatever you want to make it now. That's just not possible, and it's not legal.
Anyone else?
If I could just speak to the issue on the December 31st, 2020. First of all, I brought it up initially because I do believe that that language could be read multiple ways. But a reasonable interpretation of that is the one that, that I believe that Ramilda and I are taking as far as whether or not you could change the date. If you read the section, it says that basically municipalities have two options. The first one's not relevant in this case. The second one is waive any fees or penalty otherwise associated with the late payment of the tax if paid in full by December 31st, 2020. Now, the wording is unfortunate. The punctuation is unfortunate, but I do believe that it could be reasonably read that, that the phrase otherwise associated with the late payment of the tax if paid in full by December 31st, 2020 is a qualifier for the word penalty. And I think they specifically made that qualifier because they did not want to give the municipalities the ability to change, to waive, or affect the penalty that goes into effect after December 31st, 2020. So I believe that we're on solid ground as far as a legal opinion related to changing the date. And the fact that a number of other counties have also taken that position, I believe that, that they're reading this the same way that we are.
Yes. Exactly.
Well, then, well, then you cannot change my ordinance. You have to draft a new ordinance, because the charter will not allow you to change my ordinance to say, it has to be one subject. My subject is what my subject is, has nothing to do with extending any timeline at all. So we're going to have to either vote my ordinance down and draft a new one, or we're going to have to vote on my ordinance, one or the other.
I didn't mean to interrupt. The vehicle registration fee, I was under the impression that that was, that was an ordinance, right?
Yes.
Was that amended?
Yes.
No, it was not amended. We drafted a new ordinance.
No, we, no. I thought it was amended to change the date.
Change the date.
Mine, mine did specifically have dates in it, though.
Yes.
I explicitly put the dates in there.
Yes. And they were, and then one date was changed by amendment.
Right, because that was explicit.
By a whole year, it was changed, right?
Correct. But originally, you know, like, I wrote the ordinance explicitly with the date, so therefore, you know, you could change that date.
Well, isn't it arguable in the ordinance set in front of us, it's, the issue is tax collection?
No. Yeah, yeah, the issue is the tax collection, but the ordinance regulates the penalty amount. It does not regulate the date. It regulates the penalty amount. It says 10% to zero. It has nothing to do with the date. It says it takes the penalty from 10% to zero until December 31st. Now, if you want to amend my ordinance to say, we're going to change the penalty amount from 10% to 5% until December 31st, that's within the purview and within the guidelines of that ordinance. But you can't go in and say, well, we're going to change the date, because the ordinance has nothing to do with the date. The ordinance has everything to do with the amount.
Yeah, and the amount has to do with when the date is set. In addition, I think.
No, 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 no. The amount.
Let Mr. Dulica finish his statement, then you can.
Well, not if he's going to, okay, go ahead.
Requires that a resolution. It says, resolution required. Any taxing district electing to exercise a power under subsection A shall do so by delivering a resolution of the governing body to the tax collector for the taxing district within 30 days of the effective date of this subsection. Are you, Walter?
Is that Senate Bill 841 that you're reading?
Yeah.
Right. Well, that has nothing to do with what I'm talking about, my ordinance.
Well, I guess, do you have, do you have some reason that you believe it has to be ordinance versus resolution, even though the Senate Bill says resolution required?
I, quite honestly, Vito, I don't, I'm not too concerned about which way you do, whether you do resolution or ordinance. I think because it's taxes, it should be by ordinance, according to our charter.
Well, the statute actually does say resolution, and the topic, subchapter B, is property tax relief.
Right?
So if the subject matter is property tax relief, we have to look at the state statute.
But I'm talking about my ordinance. I don't, I'm not worried about Senate Bill 841 at this moment.
But is your ordinance tax relief?
No, my, yeah, my ordinance is reducing the tax, the penalty amount. It is not to set a date.
Well, well, aren't you going to reduce the penalty amount to zero? But only until August 31st or August. You're going to still reduce it to zero, just like your ordinance said, but it's only going to be until August instead of December.
Yeah.
And these are intelligent people. I'm hungry. You hungry?
Well, I would, I would say that that was not the intent of my ordinance, and therefore, I don't feel it's appropriate for someone to change what the intent of the ordinance is. It's supposed to be clearly expressed in the title. The title says it was to reduce the penalty from 10 to zero until December 31st. That's what the charter says. It shall be limited to one subject clearly expressed in the title. You can't, I mean, if that's the case, we could change everybody's ordinance to anything we want. We can amend it to say anything we want it to say. And it could be totally, totally out the window of what the intender wanted. My ordinance says I want to reduce the rebate to zero. Matt Vog's amendment says he wants to change the date.
I found, I found your ordinance. So it does say to eliminate the 10% penalty for the collection of Luzerne County's share of the real estate taxes to be collected from June 18th, 2020 until December 31st, 2020.
Right. That's exactly what my ordinance says.
And that, excuse me, that was from an email on Tuesday, March 31st, because I was having a hard time finding it.
Right.
In case anyone wants that.
No, it's out under pending ordinances on the county website.
Yeah. Has to be.
Right. So we either vote on my ordinance and vote it down, and then have Matt Vog bring his own ordinance, whatever he wants to do. But you can't amend my ordinance to say something different than I intended it to say.
I think that's what your statement is, Mr. Griffith. I believe there's a difference of opinion there.
Of course there is.
Anyone else?
Yes. It's Linda. I, I mean, I don't see how you can completely change the intent of an ordinance. You're allowed to amend ordinances before they're adopted, but you have to stick to the original topic. You have to stick to the original idea. You can amend some details in it, but you can't just completely change it. You can't put an ordinance out there for tax collection and then change it to a zoning ordinance by amendment. And, you know, I'm not suggesting that that's what you're doing, but I really do think that if you make too significant of a change, it's no longer an amendment. It's an actual attempt to put a new ordinance in place of the one that was already presented. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I, it's Kendra, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
There's just, I just see like a discrepancy, because we're saying that the main point of the ordinance is changing the percentage. So that's the main thing. So we're not changing the main idea of the ordinance. We're just editing a detail of it, which Ms. Houk just said could possibly be done. We're not changing the, the main preface of the ordinance, just a, a date, a detail.
Yes.
So, so let me ask members of council, why we don't want to make it till December to give the taxpayers a break on their taxes? Tell me. Why does, why, why do we have this amendment to change it to August?
Mr. Chair? Would like to respond, Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Chair? Yes. It's Chris.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Walter, I am not, I want to be perfectly clear that I am not totally against your ordinance. All I want to do is move it at a slower pace. If we go to August and we see things light at the end of the tunnel, we can then extend it further. I just don't want to do this without having the correct information in front of us. It's like we're rushing through this. I can understand where you're coming from. And in my heart, I would say, if I was voting from my heart, I would say, absolutely, Walter, I'm going with you. I just want to go at a slower pace. I'm not against it at all.
Well, the only, the difference, Mr. Pedri gave us, the numbers, when I introduced this ordinance, with 600,000, the county will lose in penalty, is what they gave us. That was the number they gave us at the last meeting, that the county would have to possibly absorb. I know the issue is the ability for tax revenues to come in if people wait until December 31st. But that's the intent of the ordinance, is there are people in this county that don't have the money and won't have the money until December 31st. I agree, there's going to be people out there that have the money and won't pay their taxes. I think that's a possibility. But if we're going to help the people of this county and give them the opportunity to get back on their feet financially, we need to give them until December 31st to make that happen. And if we're not going to do that, if we're going to just say August, well, okay, so in August, who determines that they're back on their feet? You may have people that are holding multiple properties that can't pay their taxes and haven't had revenue for rent in months, and now they're going to be stuck paying, paying the penalty fee. It's just not fair. If we're going to do it, we should do it across the board. And if the county has to step up and make cuts, and municipalities have to make cuts, that's what they have to do, just like every resident of this county has to do right now with no money. They have to fight for their money, they have to do what they have to do with no money. Why should we put our knee on our neck, on their neck, to pay a penalty for something they have absolutely no control over? It's not their fault they don't have the money. We shouldn't jump on the bandwagon and put our knee on their neck for 10% more money. I don't think that's fair.
No, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I feel the same way. You know, there's no sense in making 10% extra in county revenues off the taxpayer. I have an extremely difficult time with that. And again, this is not going to penalize our municipalities. If they see need and they want to keep the date the same, they have leeway to do so. If they want to sign a board, they can do that, well. But I will think with, when you see the recovery, and all of you are sitting on different committees on this council, and hear the news, you know that after a month of this, we're not going to snap back with this in just even a couple of months. I don't even think by, by August, we're going to get back to normal, and clothes are just not going to be there for a whole lot of people. And furthermore, our businesses, some businesses are already on life support. And that in turn is going to help hurt people's wallets, because they'll be losing their job a long time. So whatever we can do, not just for our residents, but also for, for commercial taxes, too, because that's where the people's money comes from, from their employers. So Walter, I support this 100%. I hope the rest of the council can do that as well. It's reasonable. And I'm still waiting for Mr. Swets actually to hear about the cash flow situation.
We'll get to Mr. Swets when we get the chance to vote on that, Mr. Haas. I haven't forgotten.
I, I think that one might help convince the other members. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else?
Steve here. Quick question, too, regarding how much heartburn would it be for the tax collectors by changing that date, maybe not once, but twice, considering they're the ones that have to collect the bills in the boroughs and townships? Because, you know, if you give a 60-day extension, you got to get communications out to them and a process. And with their RBA system, do we have to contact them to hard code that into the system to make that change? So, you know, there's some technical aspects as well, you know, process-wise and from a technology perspective, since they use a program. So, you know, if you propose to change it to August 18th, and then you change it again to December 31st down the line, are there going to be any, you know, expenses going out the door, having to change programming, or do we change any programming?
Well, we can ask that question in a minute when we ask Mr. Swets, okay, Mr. Urban? Anyone else?
I still think, I still think this amendment is not germane to the original ordinance, so I'm going to vote no on it. And I don't even think it should be allowed to come for a vote, because it's not germane to the original ordinance.
It's been motioned and seconded. These listeners, I think you heard their opinion, and I believe at this point in time, unless I'm incorrect, Dulica or Ms. Crockmo, you believe the amendment is permissible? Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will go on record as not agreeing with this listener's opinion.
Okay. Duly noted, Mr. Griffith. So let's, we're going to vote on the amendment, which would change the date from December 31st to August 18th, 2020. Motion was made by Mr. Vog, seconded by Ms. Radel. Vote call, please.
Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houk?
No.
Mr. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Okay, the amendment is added. Mr. Swets?
I'm here.
Okay. We had several questions. We had several questions that I think you have to respond to, Mr. Swets. Mr. Haas had some questions in regards to what our current status is. I know that you had provided us a sheet with some information, uh, but you want to update that? Second thing would be, uh, for Mr. Urban, with the tax collectors and the, um, software system they use, are there things that have to be done or, or issues that might be developed because of that? It's all yours.
And Sheila asked about the loss of revenue.
What a fucking asshole.
Okay.
I, I will get up to all of them. I will start with the current cash flow.
Oh, yeah.
You'll, you'll see later on and I'll, I'll just skip to it. So in the first quarter report, I actually had a more detailed sheet than what I had sent, uh, every week, which basically says that as of Monday, uh, the county had a balance of 59.4 million dollars. Seems like a lot of money. However, we have from now until just June, 15.9 million in payroll, 16.1 million for the TRAN, 5.5 million for the half of the ARC, 2 million for human services match, 2 million for intergovernmental. And there's a bunch of other ones, I won't go through every one, but when you get to the total, it's 59.3 million. This sheet is an estimate. It doesn't include the outstanding checks or the outstanding ACHs. It was done as of Monday morning. And at that point, our best guess is that we'd have a little over $5 million of the current cash versus the current expenses. Uh, two things, one, uh, we were talking about investing 10 to 15 million dollars, which we're obviously not going to be able to do. But to the tax ordinance, number one, to Sheila's question.
The, Manta, please.
To the end of the year, based on last year, uh, Mr. Griffith is correct. We supplied numbers of about 600,000 dollars. So that was from, uh, the whole, the whole penalty period. So if you take that penalty period and say it currently, uh, is going to go and from the 18th until the end of the year. So we just started FACE three days ago. Uh, and just moved out a month and say it's a little bit less than, little, little bit less than 40%. I'd have to run a brand new report, but just kind of off the cuff, uh, probably lost in revenue of somewhere around 300,000 dollars, maybe slightly less. Uh, to Mr. Urban's question, I would suggest, and it's council's vote obviously, that we actually get the tax collectors involved first. They collect for 62 of the 67 municipalities, Ms. Beers collects for five. Uh, Mr. McGinley early, Eric had said they're going to have a meeting next week. It's day three of the FACE period. FACE period just started. If we actually get on board and work with the municipality, we can answer the RBA question. We could change this once and we could all be on the same page and anything the municipalities need to do. If we move forward as is, it's going to be a hardship on the tax collector because they're going to have a bill in front of them and they're going to have two separate dates. They're going to have a date for the county, which has been changed and a date for the municipality, which has not been changed.
Okay, uh, Mr. Urban, did you hear that? Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I heard it.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, right now.
Okay. Sagan, did you hear, did that answer your question? Ms. Sagan?
I'm sorry, I had my mic off.
It's okay.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Questions for Mr. Swets, go ahead.
So, so if, so if municipalities, some municipalities of a 76 municipalities, if we have three to decide that they don't want to jump on board and, and do the amendment to August, whatever the date, does that mean the county should not move forward with their disordnance at all? Um, because I mean, it's going to be a hardship on three or is it a hardship? What's the number that we decide the ordinance isn't worth putting in place? I personally think that the municipalities, the tax collectors can do math really easy. And it's one of those things where they could say, this is the penalty, this is the date, it's real easy, this is how much you pay. But you know, I, I might be stretching that a little bit, but I'm just saying, if we have other municipalities that say, because I have emails from municipalities that said they're not in favor of extending the rebate period at all.
I think everybody probably received those emails.
So what, so what, what happens to the ordinance?
We follow the ordinance.
So it doesn't really matter what the municipality thinks at this point, right?
We fought, we as a county would follow the ordinance.
Okay, I just don't, I just don't want somebody to get the impression that we think we should just, uh, not, well, never mind. I'll just let it go.
Okay.
I have one clarification, Mr. McGinley. It's the date should be the 17th, not the 18th. I'm sorry, I didn't correct, correct you before. Uh, the 60 days would be the 17th, not the 18th. The new penalty on the proposed amendment would start on the 18th, it would end on the 17th.
The, the date of the was the, from the memo was the 18th, Mr. Swets.
Should be the 17th.
Date is the 18th, Mr. Swets.
I'll make it work.
Thank you.
Mr. Swets, my question, I think it was answered in part, but you, you said that we have 59.4 million today as a balance. But how much, what I'm really interested in is what our total, um, expectation in raising taxes and collecting taxes compared to collected today?
Sure, I can give a little bit on that. Uh, so that is the actual, the email that goes out that the manager sends out. And we were over 46% as of Friday for discount. Uh, the highest discount since 2016 as a percentage, because we all know the budget changes, was 47.3% in 2018. Uh, we only need $2 million to surpass that. As everyone realizes, US Postmark by the 17th still qualifies for discount regardless of when the county receives it. So we're going to definitely be ahead of the discount rate. Uh, so we are getting the money. I do think it is primarily the mortgage companies and, and things that are escrowed. I agree with that. However, our expenses until June 30th that we know of, uh, take up everything but 5 million of those dollars. And there's also, well, we haven't had the checks that we had before. Uh, we just had to go through the process of furloughing employees. That's not a big chunk of money. 5 million on 59 million. I understand 5 million is a big dollar, but as a percentage of 59 million, it's not. Also, all these things are moving. So as employees aren't here, their employee reimbursement for health insurance is getting pushed back. If bills come in later, if that affects our ability to pay. So it's always a moving target and that's the best guess as of each morning and every morning it changes.
Yeah, no, that's helpful and, and I appreciate that. I expected a lot of that too. And you know, I know you guys are really racking your brain about ways we can save money. And I mean, I look at things like the ARC payment, you know, it's coming due for $5 million. Okay, so everything in our country is slowing down. And I, I think reasonable to expect that our tax revenues are going to slow down, but also our payables are going to be slowing too for a lot of entities that are not going to make and make or break a lot of organizations. So again, when you look at something like this, to give the taxpayer a break, I think it's very reasonable and I, and also expecting federal funds to come in too, to offset a lot of our losses as well. And I would much rather see us pass those things on to hardworking taxpayers out there and property owners than just to, to sit on it. And I, I think it's something that we could still be creative with and make ends meet, just like every other American's doing. But the longer we keep shut down, the, the bigger problem this is going to be. And I, I just don't think we're going to see a lot of these tax amendments because it's going to take a lot longer for people to recover, I think. But I appreciate that. Sorry for the commentary. But I just think there's other ways that we can also, um, postpone some of these other obligations that we have. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Sne.
I, I think I could speak for all 11 members. I mean, nobody wants to put any family in harms way over this. But we also are in the service business of bringing in money. That's how we provide services and that's how we provide service for our employees to provide these services. I, I think what Mr. Perry said, and I wholeheartedly agree with, uh, Walter's, uh, uh, what, what, what he's trying to get across here. And again, nobody's wants to put any family in harms way. Uh, I, I think by the extension, if people, here, here's, we're, we're broke down into three categories here. People that took the discount that are capable of paying, people that are the average worker that could pay, uh, the face value. But that's where the concern comes in. Those people that want to pay, should pay the face value are going to wait till December and we're not going to have that revenue. By extending that date, we, we'll have a better feeling money-wise where we're at. And then we could move on from there. And again, to Walters, I have no problem with extending that or eliminating that. If the people, those middle people pay what they're supposed to pay, like they paid, uh, in previous years.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, the problem, the problem, Mr. Sne, is that there's people in the FACE area right now have no income. That's the point. And the problem is also the commercial properties, people that own restaurants, people that own commercial property have no income. They have huge tax bills, millions of dollars they have to pay and they have no income. They have no business. They have no customers. They have no, it's a restaurant. They have no business, haven't had any for months.
We totally understand that, Walter.
Yeah, and to tell them you have till August to pay your taxes is just not.
No, I'm saying that's very flexible, that date. That date's just to see what kind of revenue we have coming in. And again, nobody wants to hurt any family out there.
Not unless you put it in the amendment that you're going to be able to change that date and that was not put in the amendment. That amendment said that August 7th, August 18th was the deadline. There was nothing mentioned in the amendment that you're going to go back and revisit that, nothing.
No, Mr. Vog's original motion was to be flexible with that date, that we could move that date again or eliminate that date.
But that was not in the amendment. The amendment, the amendment, the amendment says that we are changing the date to August 7th, 18th. It didn't say anything about coming back and revisiting it.
Excuse me, it's Kendra, I had asked.
Sradal has the floor, please.
Yeah, um, just quickly, I had asked, um, right after I seconded, uh, Mr. Vog's motion, that if we change it to that date, could we go back and amend that date again to extend the period? And the answer I received from the Office of Law was that, um, we could do that if needed.
So that's official part of the amendment then, correct?
Well, there's no, in the, i- i- in the bill, that was, that was the thought by the, by the governor. There's no prohibition about, uh, changing the date again. It, it doesn't say you only can do it one time. So, uh, so, uh, Councilwoman Radal is, is correct.
But there's not, but my point here is there's nothing in the amendment that says we are going to go back and look at it. Correct?
Correct.
Correct. So August 17th can come and go and the council doesn't have to go back and look at it.
I think Mr. Haas was trying to get into her comment, Mr. Haas?
No, that's fine, Mr. Chair. Hey, I appreciate the colleagues that, that want to change the date. I get it, I get the idea of flexible building. I would normally support something like that. But I mean, Mr. Urban raised a good point regarding how, how are we going to practice this? How are the tax collectors going to go back and then we're asking to change up a tax? And now we're going to ask them to change it again if we change our minds? I mean, then you're in the realm of how feasible is this really going to be? So I would much prefer again, it's kind of moot at this point, I guess, but make it plain, give the people and the businesses and, uh, uh, aware of to know that, hey, you, you got a book and so just try to get back on our feet and support them and support our people. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So I would like to make an amendment to the ordinance, Mr. McGinley.
You may.
I would like to amend the ordinance that said, that says that after August the 7th, prior to August 17th, 30 days prior to August 17th, the council will revisit the ordinance to determine if it needs to be extended.
I'll second up.
Prior to August 17th?
Second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, August 18th, Mr. McGinley, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that, I, I guess that threw me off.
Yep, you're right.
30 days prior?
30 days prior to August 18th that the council must revisit this ordinance and vote up or down because elections are coming next year. I want that out there.
I think we're aware of that.
Walter, this has nothing to do with elections. About people. That's what everybody's concerned is here, people, not elections.
Yep.
And we have an amendment by Mr. Griffith, seconded by Mr. Sne. On that amendment, which would say 30 days prior to August 18th, we must revisit the ordinance and review the date. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else on that, on the amendment? Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radal?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, amendment passes. On the ordinance with the two amendments, August 18th and Mr. Griffith's second amendment, which requires a review 30 days prior to August 18th. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Mc, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radal?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Down to public comment.
Mr. Chair, can I speak before public comment? Or can I speak as?
Let's have public comment and you obviously can have a chance to speak.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, this is Mr. Manta, public comment.
Mr. Manta, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay. So, so from what I'm understanding, what Mr. Deluca said about contracts with the prison and about contracts in general with the county, there's an escape clause, correct? I'll, 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 I'll listen to the answers. I'll just ask the questions first. So, so the question is, there's an escape clause for contracts. Hmm, that's fine and dandy. So if they write a contract with an escape clause in it, they might as well not even write the contract because people are going to say, well, I'm a general contractor. I'm going to do work for Luzern County and sign a contract and I'm going to be able to get out of it because I didn't bid enough for the job. Is that my understanding what's happening with this insurance people? They didn't bid enough or they didn't bid high enough to retain the contract for the, the insurance for the, the prisoners. Now that's one question.
Well, I think talking about healthcare for the prisoners there and not insurance. Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
All right, go ahead. Let me finish. So the, the second thing is that if you make an, a, a, an amendment to, a, 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 something, the amendment, it, it, it just, it just. I never did my taxes on, online with, with, with the IRS. So I have to wait till July till I get my payment from the government. So wait a minute, if I have to wait till July, so that July, August, September, October, November, so I'm just going to be getting my money from that and people that are, are, are getting money for small business loans, who've already used all that money up. So how are people going to get money to pay the taxes on time? And then the third thing that I want to go through is that Wyoming Valley Cemetery Authority has a contract with Mr. William, uh, uh, Feighy or whatever his name is. And why can't people get out of that contract as well as get out of the contract from the prison? So I mean, there's a lot of conflicting. So, I mean, there's a lot of conflicting information in my mind that shows that something, there's a skunk in the woodpile, and people are not paying attention to what's going to hurt the people in the valley. The people in the valley do not have enough fund, funding for themselves. And by the way, all these other places in the, in the, in Lackawanna County and, and all these other counties, they have food distributions. Where's the food distribution for Luzern County? Could someone, if they have no job and they have no income, where could people get food in Luzern County? Everybody else is bragging about, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Manta, your three minutes is up, but I can answer that last question for the food distributions. If you contact the Commissioner on Economic Opportunity, which is located in Wiltshire, they can give you all the information about all the food distributions throughout the four counties that they serve, which Luzern is the major one. So, that would be an easy one for you. Okay? Mr. DeLuca? Excuse me, your time is up on this one. Mr. DeLuca, did you hear the information about the contracts?
I, I made it very clear that I was speculating as to why the vendor was getting out of the contract. I thought that I made it clear that my suspicion was that they, it wasn't lucrative enough for them, and that's why they were leaving. I have absolutely no idea, so I wanted to, I thought I made that clear, apparently I didn't, but I have absolutely no idea why they're, they're getting out of the contract. So, that was one issue I know you brought up. I have no idea about anything with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority and their contracting practices, and whether or not they could or want to get out of a contract with a specific vendor.
Yeah, I think that's in their hands. You know, the county does not deal with that. I think the other- Tim, hang on. Tim? Excuse me. Mr. McGinley? Excuse me. I think the other question you have was about people's opportunities or paying taxes, and I think we had a long discussion about that prior to you coming on, Mr. Manta. But that's your time, please. I have-
Okay.
A couple other. Uh, Mr. Raybo has sent us an email. I'm going to read what I have. Respect to the counter response, Governor Zedeck, that needs to be public outreach to residents of Hazlen instead of lip service, encouraging as well as validating a mass commuting of the Dominican population, excuse me, residents to New York and Jersey. Also, cheerleader Governor Wolf must stop, as the city of Hazlen has been under siege on New York State residents who are entitled, not entitled, fought our municipalities, because New York chased them, going full, they're spreading the virus around being from the source of virus outbreak entering the U.S., which is proven by virologists. And another comment he has, respect to non-agenda lives, I pleaded with the county manager to stop pandering to political friends living in surrounding municipalities or advocated segment of population who don't social distance themselves and don't even care to stop community to New York and New Jersey, as they are just making outlandish lies and excuses that enable furthering the spread of virus. Those are the ones that I have in regards to- in regards to any comments. He had one other comment in regards to Northeast Revenue Elite, where he strongly opposed that contract. And that's what I have at this point. Let me check the question and answer. We answered both of those, I think, early on. There are no other comments there. Anyone else?
Okay. I have one, one last comment, please.
No, Mr. Manta, your time is up, please. You want to send me an email? I'll, I'll certainly get an answer for you, or I'll include it on the next agenda, thank you.
My computer is down.
Well, okay, call me or send me a text message, you have my phone number, okay? And call me after, well, please, thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, wait, Mr. McGinley. Uh, Mr. Haas had a comment, and so do I.
Go ahead. Whoever's first, Mr. Haas or Mr. Griffith.
Thanks, Walter, and thanks, Mr. Haas.
Go ahead, Harry, go ahead.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Hey, um, just, the election's coming up. Now, I speak, obviously, I'm a candidate, and this, the issue that I have, it doesn't pertain, because whatever happens with our elections is going, anybody who's on the ballot's going to be equal. But my concern is with the disenfranchisement of our voters, and I'd like to really get a report from our Elections Bureau exactly how mail-in ballots are going to be, how the whole process is going to take place. Um, I, we know that the governor really, really, really wants to push 100% mail-in balloting, I think that's a bad idea. I think we need to continue to give people the option, if they want to help, that's fine, but I think to take away the ability to come to a polling place is going to really damage the participation of a lot of our people. So, we need to give them the choice. But even furthermore, how, when, when we look at them on ballots, now I'm hearing conflicting things out there from, from people in the community saying, we're going to mail ballots out to everybody, every voter, uh, we're going to wait to apply, the machines are down, we can't put the ballots out yet, there's a lot of confusion right now. And we're only six weeks or so away from June 2nd. So, I really think we need to have some definitive guidance here, just for the sake of the pot, we need to get the word out to people. And I, I don't know what this would look like, Mr. Chair, but if we could have the, the director come and speak to us perhaps in two weeks or give us a, in, or online, just outline exactly what's taking place. Because I, I, I know I, I share with everybody, there's a constituent who was actually not in to the Elections Bureau the, um, last week, and I think that, that needs to change like immediately, we need to give people the means to get to the Elections Bureau. If they can go to the Price Chopper, they should be able to go to the Elections Office. And if they're able to go to the Wegmans, they should be able to go to vote on Election Day. To me, it's, it's just a no-brainer. So, we need to, again, balance common sense and, and the practicing of it, of all this, we need to make it happen, but we've got to do it with the safety component, too. It's a pain with a wide brush and just axe the whole thing in one way or the other, I think that's bad form, a lot of people are going to lose out. Again, talking just as an American who really values the fact that we all got to be able to have our people participate if they want to. Thanks for including me on this one.
Well, I, uh, will ask the manager to have something ready for next week, okay?
And again, just for the record, just, Mr. Chair, one more thing, too. Just haphazardly mail out ballots to anybody on the election rolls, you're opening it up to fraud. Like, people have to apply for that ballot, or else you got where they're, where they're going to buzz around, they're out of Luzern County. So, again, I, we really need to have that policy locked down, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith first, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. McGinley, the only question I have is for either Mr. Swetzer, it's obviously for Mr. Pedri, is regarding our TRAN that's coming due in June, and I know that they said that we have our money available for that. Has anybody reached out to the bank to give us an extension on the payment of that TRAN? For, for instance, if we run short due to cash flow problems that we're talking about, people not paying their taxes on time, and all the things that we're worried about, I think we should be, it would, it would be really wise for the county manager to reach out to the bank and ask them, I mean, they're giving extensions to everybody for, because of the emergency, we need to take advantage of that extension, so we can keep our capital where we need to keep it, to make sure we have payroll, to make sure we pay bills, and the things that the county needs to pay. He should be reaching out to that bank to make sure that we have that provision in place, even though we very well poss, well, from what Mr. Swet says, we're going to have the money to pay our TRAN, but right now, we're only in April. Anything can happen between April and June with this pandemic and all the things that the manager needs to spend money for. We may be short, so I would think it would be wise for us to reach out to the bank and get an extension on that now, rather than wait until the last minute. The other comment I have is exactly on Harry's point, is regarding the voting. There is absolutely no reason in the world why we cannot have those ballots, those mail-in ballots and that stuff in the lobby of the Penn Place Building between the vestibule. There's provisions that could be put in place to make sure that we don't have issues. Right now, we're, theoretically, we should be voting next week. If they did not extend it, everything we have in place should be in place now for, for, preparing for April 28th election, not preparing for a June 2nd election. June, from April 28th to June 2nd should be time for us to dot our i's and cross our t's, not to do all the work that we should have been doing up to April 28th. I think we're going to have some serious problems in this county for elections. I think we need to get, we have just spent over $3 million on election machines, and we're not going to be able to use them. I also want to ask Mr. Swet's if we got our 340-some-thousand dollars from the state, and where he put that in the New World at this point?
340,000 dollars for what?
From the, from the state in reimbursement for our, our voting machines.
I think we got 60%, so I hope it's more than 340,000.
Well, they, they still haven't, we're still waiting for them to send us the other million or so, but the 300-and-some-thousand dollars that are already sent to the county, uh, I would like to know where we logged that into, uh, New World.
Mr. Pedri or Mr. Swet's? Mr. Pedri?
I'll, I'll review and let you know, I don't know offhand.
Uh, will someone contact the bank in that regard of the question about whether they'll offer us an extension?
Sure.
Okay. And you'll get information in that, in the other part of the question, for next Tuesday, please? Okay?
So, so, so does Mr. Swet's know if we got the 343,000? Because it should have been reseated in the Treasurer's Office.
Actually, Mr. Griffith, I don't. Every single check that comes in or ACH, I don't know. So, it, it could have been, I've been preparing for the first quarter report, uh, just like the budget transfer, some other things took higher priority.
Okay, I'll wait till, I'll wait till next Tuesday.
Anyone else? Say, do you have a question?
Uh, yes.
No, I was just, I was going to respond to Harry, um, about Harry's concerns. And maybe you'll think this is political, Harry, because many of the governors were, that were speaking, were Democrats, but where they had full mail-in, mail-in voting, um, there did not seem to be a, a very small percentage of fraud, smaller than there is now, and a great many more people voted than they had voted before. And, um, so, I mean, personally, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Leah, this is Leanne.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, just in, just in response to that with Sheila, um, you know, there may, that may be true, that a lot more people would vote via mail, but I think agreeing with Mr. Haas and Mr. Griffiths that we should have the option to be able to go to the, the voting poll, and I hope that we're able to work that out. And just going back to the, um, the question about northeast revenue, um, well, actually with our repository sales and not lowering the assessed value to the purchase price, um, I'm on the real estate committee, as you know, and that's something that we're going to have a meeting shortly and we can discuss again. I know it has to go through the law office, but it's something that I definitely will make a note of so that we can get an answer to that.
Thank you.
And if I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Carezak Federal Guard gave us $14 million to Pennsylvania to run elections, there's money there, let's make it happen, allow everybody the choice, thank you.
Mr. McGinley, can I speak real quickly?
Yeah.
The only thing I, the only thing I would say is, listen, I, I fully agree with everybody here, I would love to have nothing but a full, normal election, that's what I would like, I want to use our new machines, I want to break them out, I think it's a great idea, I would love to have them, I want people standing up front, I want, I love to have an election, if you know me, you know this. Uh, my concern is the coronavirus. So, my only concern, and the only reason why I'm even saying anything about mail-in ballots, is because of the fact that I'm, I am rapidly losing poll workers, and I'm rapidly losing polling places of those locations that cannot be there. So, now we're looking for alternatives, we're looking for other options, we're looking for safe options for, in order for us to, to, to get us there. Whether or not we, we go with a full mail-in ballot, or, or the in-person option, or everything that we do here, I think every single person on council should be advocating for their constituents to apply for a mail-in ballot. We, I, I checked with Ms. Rochella, she's up to about 14,000, uh, so far, 14,000 is an incredible amount, but honestly, that's not a huge number for our voting, uh, our voting, uh, numbers. So, continually advocating for people to apply for the ballot, um, is, is the best way to go about doing this right now. And we'll have a full discussion as to how the election is going to be run on June 2nd moving forward, but in the meantime, uh, I think everybody should be advocating as much as they can for the mail-in ballot during this, this pandemic. I, I, I think that when this is all over, I would like nothing more than go to the polls, I'd love to talk to people, uh, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to say, this new law is in place, let's utilize it.
Okay.
David, David, this is Sheila, I just wanted to note, um, we sent in our applications for a mail-in ballot. Do you have any idea how long the turnaround is?
Oh, it usually will come right in, and then you won't get your ballot until, I believe, May 26th.
Okay.
I believe that's the date, I don't know all that offhand, but let me, let me confirm that, but, uh, uh, I think that's how it works, I'll, I'll, I'll track that down and let you know.
Okay.
Okay. And that's why we need to, we just need to, to really hear about this, Mr. Chair, we knew this a couple weeks either in front of council or online or whatever, thanks.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
One thing for the manager, are we anticipating furloughing any more employees in the county? We have 1,500 employees and we furloughed 100 and some, I guess, probably about 1% or, or so, or about 10%. Uh, are we anticipating, uh, furloughing any more employees, Convention Visitor Bureau? I see they only lost two, I don't know what the rest of those folks are doing in that department, but there's a lot of departments that seem like they have employees that, are they working in the courts, or are the stenographers working, you know, is there more people we could furlough? If he could address that, and, and, uh, I would appreciate that as well.
Sure. First off, your numbers are wrong, uh, we have 1,433 current employees, over 900 of them are in, uh, positions that I couldn't do anything with furloughs with. Um, that's corrections, probation, 911, uh, those facilities there. When you take off the, uh, the vacancies, we are left with a pool of about 600 some, uh, so when you look at them, we actually furloughed about 35% of the people who we, uh, are deemed non-essential, life-sustaining, uh, individuals. Now, that doesn't mean that we still don't have jobs to do, we still have to, uh, collect everything in the clerk of courts, collect everything in prothonotaries, it's an incredibly difficult, uh, process that we went through. Um, is there a potential for future, um, layoffs? Yeah, I mean, excuse me, furloughs, not layoffs. Is there potential for future furloughs? Yeah, that's, could be a potential, but once again, I'm looking at our revenues, I'm looking at our numbers coming through here. Every, the, the council so far in that, in that conversation was focused on tax revenue, but that is not my biggest concern right now, tax revenue is, is, is obviously going to come in when it comes in. My concern right now is our, uh, other revenues, our filing fees and those types of things as well. All these things have to come into play. Uh, furloughs are not something that we, we mess around with, not something we, 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 we take lightly at all. Extremely difficult decisions in order to come this far, do, is there a possibility we, we have to go farther depending on our revenues? Yes. But, uh, what we've left with, uh, the county right now is a skeleton crew in almost every department. Uh, everybody who is, uh, furloughed, uh, excuse me, is not furloughed, is absolutely working. Everybody who is furloughed, uh, was working as well. Uh, our efficiencies will go down, our Tourism Bureau is doing a phenomenal job of getting our information out there on our Facebook pages and everything along those lines. You know, every single county employee is working incredibly hard right now, it's an extremely difficult time. And I know that, Mr. Griffith, I know you, I know you're, maybe you're happy about these furloughs, I'm not. It's a difficult decision that we have to make, uh, but it's a necessary one, and I did it with, uh, the best decision that we possibly can, looking at our, our finances. But putting 100 and, you know, 28, you know, other Luzern County residents, taxpayers on the unemployment dole, uh, is not something that I'm thrilled about. But I had to make a tough decision, and we did it there, hopefully these people come back to work, and hopefully everybody gets back, um, on their feet, uh, come June or July.
Have, have you, have you considered locking down the non-essential spending as well?
Uh, we have done that already, as well as we've also enacted a hiring freeze.
So, there was a memo sent out to stop non- So, so there was a memo sent out to stop non-essential spending?
Oh, I don't need a memo. I had a conversation with all my division heads.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. McGinnity, Steve?
Go ahead.
Uh, since they, we were talking about elections, I, I do want to thank, uh, Manager Prejery for getting the, uh, or commencing, or having the Bureau of Elections commence the, the, the putting up of sample ballots. Uh, they are still incomplete up on the website and somewhat buried within candidate information. Can we bring that out to the forefront a little bit more, uh, off the webpage?
Yeah, I'll talk to our, uh, I'll, I'll talk to the IT department. Some other things I want to get out there is, obviously, the people are applying for these mail-in ballots as well. They should also, um, check their registrations, make sure they have the, the proper registrations. People sometimes only come out to vote in the presidential election, uh, so I should try to get that on the website as well.
Yeah, I mean, like, we, we're looking at the sample ballots today, and then they were only like partially put out. They're not all out there.
Anyone else?
Mr. Pedri, do you know when the Board of Elections is gonna meet to certify the election, the, the ballots?
Uh, I, I do not.
That should have been done by now. They put the ballots out, correct? They were not certified? They didn't have a meeting?
I can't speak for the Election Board, Mr. Griffith. I'm really, I, I, I've been in the middle of a lot of stuff right now. I don't know what the Election Board is doing.
Could, could Ramilda speak to it?
If not, would you please get some information on when they're gonna meet, or have they met, whatever? Go ahead. Go ahead, Ramilda.
What was the, the question, Mr. Griffith?
Question was, uh, I think Mr. Griffith asked, the ballots are there, has the Election Board met and certified the ballots?
I believe they have.
When was that, when was that meeting?
I, I have to, I, I don't go to the, uh, Election Board meetings, but I'll get you that information, Mr. Griffith. Uh, you can email me the exact information that you want, and I will get it to you.
When I spoke to Jose, he said they haven't met since March.
Well, Ms. Crocomel will get back to you with it, whatever information's there. If it's March, she'll tell you. Uh, I don't know. Okay?
Okay.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
The only thing is, does the Election Board even certify the ballots? I, I'll tell you what, let's review it and I'll get back to everybody.
Get the information, and then we can have a discussion.
Did you, did, Mr. McGinnity, did you ask Jose to attend the work session as I asked him? Yes, I sent you an email asking for Jose to show, to be at the work session?
Today?
No, the other day, yesterday.
I'm sorry, I did not see it yesterday. If you sent me, I'm sorry, I did not see it.
Okay.
And I did not ask him because I didn't see it.
Maybe we could have him for the next week's meeting.
Well, I think we need a discussion about elections.
Well, that's why I want the Board Chairman to be there if we could.
Well, I don't, I don't know what his availability is. We can make a request.
Thank you.
We have a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Mr. Schnee, do you have a second? Is that Miss Segman?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposition, extensions, none heard? Motion carries. We're gonna go right into the work session, but I would request that we're gonna make a few, uh, changes. Uh, we've now at about three hours. So, uh, we've already had the pledge, moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas?
Go on.
Ms. Howk?
Here.
Mr. Durbin?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Riddle?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinnity?
Present. Thank you. Looking at our agenda, uh, I believe we could probably delete number three. The, uh, resolution regarding submission of an application. We'll move that to next week's meeting. Number four, Mr. Haas, do you want to work with your committee people and, and come up with the letter, fill in the details on that, and bring it back for next week?
Yeah, I think the points moved anyway, Mr. Chairman. The act that was passed yesterday did, did not actually give counties any money, so we'll be looking at the next one.
Okay, so at this point, we'll delete it, and then when it does happen, we'll revisit that?
I think delete, yeah. And, and again, I don't know exactly what calendars for the Congress with that, but.
Okay.
We'll revisit it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, on the monthly division reports, I think you all have that, and it's all been posted. Uh, in light of the time, if you have questions for Mr. Pedri, we'll entertain any of those now. If you have future questions after the meeting, we'll take those next week. Anyone with questions for Mr. Pedri in regards to the division reports for March of 2020?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. McGinnity, it's Linda Howk.
Sure.
Um, and it's regarding children and youth in, in services. With the quarantine and, or the isolation and the, uh, shutdown, um, of schools and, um, places like that, I wondered if there had been any change that was noticeable with children and youth, either in terms of increased referrals, uh, or decreased, uh, referrals of cases to them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pedri, do you have a response to that, or can you get?
That we, we have had a lower number of referrals to our children and youth. They're, they are still, uh, very busy with, with the, 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 the kids that we have in placement right now. Uh, but as you know, Ms. Howk, you can get to from it from being a teacher, it's a lot of times it's teachers, uh, that are, are, are eyes and ears out there. Uh, so.
Right.
Yeah. With our, with our kids not going to school, um, I believe that some of our, our numbers are down. Now, we, they're, they're still, they still are incredibly busy. They're still working on a lot of different things, and, you know, I'm, I'm killing myself to try to find caseworkers for children and youth, and I have been during my entire time. But, uh, without having those teachers as that front line, that's a major concern across the entire Commonwealth.
Right. Well, it's not just teachers. I mean, when kids are confined to their homes, um, there, nobody's seeing them in the community either, so. But, uh, that, that is a concern, and I know it's been a concern of the education community. Okay, thank you.
Great. Mr. Swets? Jared, if you could put the, uh, report, the financial report up. Mr. Swets?
Thank you. On your screen is the first quarter report. Uh, as everyone knows, it is due per the Luzern County Home and Chartered. Uh, every year we give this report at the first meeting in April. Uh, a little change, we have three years instead of two years, and we primarily focus on the revenue with the COVID crisis. Uh, can you go to the next slide, please? So, the revenue in the year, so there's 18, 19, and 20. Uh, as everyone's aware, and, and I know a lot has happened since then, but the tax bills themselves went out two weeks later, uh, than the prior year. Uh, the, the discount has ended on April 17th. Uh, again, just a point I already made, if something is a U.S. postmark on April 17th, regardless of when it's received in the tax office or with the collector, uh, it still qualifies for the discount period. Uh, I just wanted to give thanks to both the budget and finance team, the budget analysts that prepared to this report, and also the Treasurer's Office. Uh, while everyone has been staying at home, we had to have a small crew come in because the taxes come to this main courthouse primarily. It has to get from the mailroom, upstairs, in the RBA, and in the New World. So I just want to thank the Treasurer's Office for their excellent work during this time, and also the tax collectors. We're getting in the money as soon as they can. Uh, this is government. If everyone works together, it can be a great thing. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is just a graphical representation of some of the big departments for the last three years. And you could see, uh, most of them are on pace, because I think everyone is aware that COVID in this particular county hit late March. Uh, we didn't have the casino close until the 15th, and a, a modified shutdown of the county until the 20th. So for the first quarter, a good portion of the first quarter, outside of the two-week delay in the tax bills, everything was pretty stagnant. So you'll see a lot of the numbers, the three-years bars are pretty close. Uh, it's really going forward, and I have just a few slides, uh, talking about, you know, what's the next step, which relates to the cash flow, some of the things we talked about before, uh, also about the potential recovery and some bills. So this is basically just a three-year slide of some of the high-level departments. And you could see, again, most of them, uh, Security Sheriff had that one year where there was a big difference, but a lot of them, the bars are very similar. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the 50,000-foot or even higher level. This is the one-sheeter. This is a famous Rick Williams one. Uh, this is definitely revenue by budget class, so you're just looking at taxes. It's not breaking it down between current, between prior, behind pilot. This is all taxes for the general fund. And as you can see, the, the numbers are not, again, outside of the taxes are, are pretty comparable. So as of 3/31, uh, very little impact to Luzern County. Next slide. Well, so this is really where we're at now. So we're beyond the first quarter, and I get it's just the very beginning of the second quarter. Uh, there's tons of uncertainty, we, and our question is, is this a revenue lag in timing that will catch up, or are we gonna get back to where we were? Uh, we've had a reduction in staffing. We have a, a timing change, and the question is, are we gonna return to these pre-COVID levels? I will tell you personally, the, uh, Department of Payroll has been on calls for the CARES Act. I've been on calls myself with both S&amp;P and PFM about potential recovery times. As everyone knows, when you're in the middle of something, you're not the case study. You don't really know where the bottom is, but there's been talk, and we'll go through that a little bit later. So we're looking at this stuff every day, every week, and giving council an update every week of where we are, as well as the manager. Uh, we spend a lot more time on this. This is something that we really do for mid-year, and the reports that you'll see a little bit later on the two-page reports of revenue versus expense, where I had the $5 million estimate, those are the reports that we use to prepare for the TRAN. That's the level that the bank needs to see for the last three or four months, or if we go public, uh, as we did the one-year, but that's what they need to see to actually make sure you can make the payments back. So there's a lot of uncertainty. We're not really sure, but we are monitoring it, and everyone's in the same boat together. Uh, next slide. So this is the first page of those cash and expense projections. Again, this is not every level, but it has the current day's book balance. So what happens is about nine o'clock, we get the reports from PNC of the current bank balance for the previous business day. Those are entered into here. Our payroll reimbursement and healthcare reimbursement are estimates that we use for the budget, uh, the percentages. The regular payroll, about 30% gets reimbursed by the agencies and the other funds. About 70% of our payroll dollars and payroll-related taxes, uh, go to the general fund. But these are formulas based on the actual numbers. The numbers on the next sheet are based on the actual payrolls. So this is just the cash that's in the bank and our estimated revenues. Uh, again, tax claim estimate, we'll drop that in as we get, uh, tax claim numbers in. We're waiting for that to get finalized. I didn't want to put something in, especially if there was a change, uh, with the vote being on like for council. So we will update that for a tax claim estimate on what we think they'll be, uh, for May and June. They weren't missed. It was just we didn't know what, what they were gonna be, so I would add them at a later date. Uh, expense page, next slide, please. So the expenses are more than the 40,000-foot level, but again, not your line-by-line 40-page, uh, budget report that you get in the month report. So you'll get that for the next meeting. Those are the detailed reports that Budget and Finance prepares for the second meeting of every month. So these reports are based on our payroll estimate for the month, and it's based on the payrolls that are left. So for April, you'll see there was one payroll remaining, uh, the, and you saw in the letter that I sent to council, the 2750 is our estimate of payroll and related taxes outside of healthcare. And then we made some changes in May and June, uh, relative to the furlough list and the estimate of around 200,000 per payroll saving. So even though you don't see the formula, those are in the payroll number. The debt service number is a hard number. When we sit down at the budget and say it's gonna be 24.5 million, most of that is in November, but not all. Uh, so there's 8.7 million. That's something that is required payment. Uh, we had this talk a few years ago about making some changes to the budget, when we wanted to reduce something by 3% or 8% or 2%. And I sat there and said, debt service isn't gonna take a furlough. So there are some set costs. Uh, yes, some things can be moved. They could possibly be paid in a later month or a later quarter if need be, but there are certain things that have to be paid, and debt service is one of them. So that is our debt service estimate till June. Uh, this was done until June because of two reasons. One, having a forecast from now until December, besides being all over the screen or being 12 pages, is pointless when the information changes daily. So we update this, and this three months gives us an idea of June 30th, and we'll update from there. Uh, the county portion of the ARC, that's the much talked about, the total bill's the 14.5 million. That's half of the county portion. Uh, I had talked to Mr. Hazuri. In, in previous year, we paid it in April. I did tell him there was no way we'd be able to pay it until June at the earliest, and it may be later. Uh, and he, he was understanding with the current crisis. Uh, human services match, that's just basically our general fund match, which is requested quarterly, broken down. Same thing within our governmental. Some of them are monthly, some of them are quarterly payments, but the save lines on the slide, it was just listed as quarterly. Uh, vendor's estimate is pretty much everything not listed above. That's not healthcare and utilities. So this is other out-of-the-door things, whether it be, uh, office supplies, desk, computers, anything that's not a utility, that's not healthcare. Um, these are things that go through both the purchasing department and accounts payable. The healthcare estimate is based on a number of payrolls, uh, per month. That's why it's not the same number each month. It goes by the actual estimate of the number of weeks. We get that, we get the healthcare, I'm sorry, the healthcare is each week, and, and that's why it's different. So our healthcare bill currently, we get billed every week by our healthcare provider. So that's based on the number of weeks left, uh, with an estimated dollar amount. And utilities is similar. It's based on the number of weeks, so that's why those numbers are different. Again, if you look down the bottom, so you could see it's an estimated surplus, because revenues were showing as negatives on the first page. So that's the estimated surplus at this time. Couple of things that I talked about before. This doesn't have every single check that went out of the system. Again, things do come in and out, and I'm primarily focused on getting this updated in the tax revenue. We have accountants upstairs. We have the Treasurer's Office. We have the audit team. Uh, so I can get this information, but I don't have it all in my head, so that was why I couldn't answer the question before. Uh, but just so everyone knows, this is the high level, and it changes all the time. And then back on the bottom there, as we talked about, we understand the situation, but when the budget was put together, the Luzern County investments was a minimum of $10 million and a much higher interest rate than any of us think we will ever get, uh, in this, in the short term. So we'll be looking at that as long as some, and I think to Mr. Haas's point of some expenses, uh, some seminars and things like that. I know Mr. Griffith brought it up that, and Mr. Pedri had spoke to us about the non-essential things. Some things like that, expenses and seminars, that I think you're gonna see a big push to online, instead of having staff travel, uh, and again, how long this will go on. It's not gonna be a day or two. We're talking months, so I think you will see savings in some of those areas. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just kind of a wrap-up and summary, and I just put some high-level things on there, and then I had another spreadsheet I prepared. So first, and I think we talked about it very much today, was the real estate taxes. I agree with Mr. Pedri. I'm worried about some of the other things, and I'll talk about them right after investment income. But our real estate taxes is 87% of our total taxes. That's the largest part, so that needs to be monitored. Uh, the recovery scenarios, there's a lot of different models out there and different shapes of different models. Nobody knows if it's gonna be a V curve, if it's gonna bounce back. I can tell you from the calls that I had, a lot of people have talked about, is the second quarter or is the third quarter gonna be the bottom? Is the second quarter gonna be the bottom, and we start recovery, and then it goes back down in the third quarter? Obviously, with us being in this, nobody knows. I can tell you from the calls I had that the, on the U.S. level, we're looking at 6% growth pre-crisis, and everyone's best scenario now is that we get to about 0% growth. So we obviously have huge losses now with places being shut down. The goal and the hope is to get to zero at this point, and how we're gonna get there, and the time it takes to get there, uh, is still being, uh, discovered. So I'm on these calls every week with both S&amp;P and PFM. Investment and income, I'll skip over, but I will go to the one thing that Mr. Petter talked about, which was some of the revenues, uh, that are discretionary that come in. Now, this is April, and it's kind of April first to April fifteenth, so some of this may be timing. I could have got a bill one year in the first two weeks of April, and next year I get it in April twentieth. In the monthly reports, they'll show up the same, but because I'm trying to put something together for the first quarter and give some flavor, they don't. So this is not on the slide, but just some of the lines items that we talked about. So the district justices' court fees last year, and this is April, April only, so April first to April fifteenth, not June, not January first to April fifteenth. We had about a hundred and eleven thousand in revenue in twenty nineteen. We're down to sixty-one thousand this year. The pro bonitaries office had a hundred and twenty-six thousand in fees, a hundred and eight thousand this year. Probation collected two hundred and thirty-one thousand in nineteen, a hundred and fifty-three thousand this year. The prior year real estate taxes was five hundred and thirty thousand last year, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand this year. So you could see with some of these items that, yes, there's going to be savings on expenditures, but also these revenues, even if they come in, are going to be pushed into a next quarter, and are some of these fourth-quarter items are going to be pushed into the next fiscal year. Uh, I think, as I've said before, and everyone on the call is aware, for audit purposes, it's all going to hit twenty-twenty, but it's more for cash flow purposes than managing the bills we have. So yes, we're sitting with AP saying, when can we pay this bill? We want to pay the bill. We're moving towards a thirty-day period versus a come-as-you-go, and I think we're going to get there sooner rather than later. It may get extended. Uh, and this is kind of a back-to-the-future of where we were four or five years ago, when it would be October, and we were waiting for the TRAN to pay bills. There's a lot of work done by both councils through some refinancing and the administration to get us out of that. Unfortunately, we're on the track to going back there. Uh, good news is, it's not just Luzerne County. It's everyone. Bad news is, a lot of the work still needs to be done, and we're trying our best to hold the line. So I understand you can refinance. I understand and agree that if we have to do it, we could. We need to be proactive and have everything prepared, but these are not things that we take lightly. I don't want to just move a date to say, hey, let's pay this debt later. Let's pay this TRAN later. I get it, if the money's not coming in, it's not coming in. That's the option, and we definitely should have the conversation. But we put a lot of time, this council, prior councils, this new council, a lot of time in the budget process, or people that are just came on the council, watch the budget. It's a lot of hours put into that. So just to say, hey, let's cut this percentage, or hey, let's change that amount. And I understand why. It's definitely a global pandemic, not just the U.S., not just Luzerne County, but we really need to look at the numbers and look at not just the revenues, but the expenses, and our team has been doing that. So for, as I said before, you know, from the real estate coming in, the treasurer's office, I have an audit team, as everyone knows. Audit deadline isn't moved. We're working remotely on the audit. I've got people working on budget numbers, getting reports ready for me to review. So budget and finance is very busy, and I don't say that as other departments aren't, but I just want to let everyone know that we have the first quarter report, we have the audit, we have our day-to-day, we have our findings from last time on the audit that we're trying to improve on. We have conference calls once a week with the auditors. There's quite a lot going on in budget and finance. So that's all I really have for verbal summary. Uh, next slide, please. And that's just the questions. Anything that I can answer right now, I will. If not, I will get it for you and add it to the questions for the next meeting.
Questions for Mr. Swetts?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Swetts, in our debt service account, five seventy-five-three, five seventy-five-four, and fifty-five, we transferred five thousand dollars out, and the notation is, in, uh, New World, that it was the changed numbers. Could you explain what that transfer was for and why there was no budget transfer sent to council on that?
I would actually have to look at that, Mr. Griffith.
Okay. Would you, would you look at that and shoot us an email?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I see that there was a transfer, and I think it was probably just a numbers thing to try and, uh, it was because of the refinancing of the, of the debt and, and things like that, but it was a transfer that took that five thousand dollars out of the budget and, and transferred out to another account. So if you'd let me know what happened there, that would be helpful. Um, and I don't think there's anything else that I had for, for you, Brian. I thank you very much for the report, though. Thank you.
Sure. Other people for Mr. Swetts?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, Brian Harry has great, great report. How are we doing on accessing federal or state funding for any of our projects? Have you got the scuttlebutt on that at all?
Yeah, I could, I could take this one, I could take this one, Harry, real quick.
Go, go.
So, uh, so, uh, CDBG monies, as I, as Mr. Urban was, was questioning, and we were holding off on some of those emails that I sent out. Uh, I'm, I would, I would have liked to have utilized the full two-point-four million dollars, uh, that we, we got, we got from the feds on urgent need, which is what we've done in the past for emergency-type situations. Uh, we haven't, uh, been, uh, approved for that. Um, I will send council an email today that Andy Riley got from, uh, the CDBG that allows for only seventy, only, seventy percent has to be utilized for low-to-moderate income areas on these funds, uh, which is great, and we'll, we'll take it and we'll use it. Uh, but the problem is that we, uh, we still need to, to figure out exactly which way we're going to be spending on those funding. Um, in addition, working with, uh, the Department of Health, um, has been, uh, has been really well, uh, putting a lot of information into them with regard to the, the pandemic and what our coroner's office has been working with, um, as well, and the EMA has been doing a great job throughout the entire process. And, you know, one thing that get lost in, and I don't want to get lost into the minutia of the meeting. I know we've been at this for a long time, but, uh, today, you know, we're up to fifty deaths here in, uh, in Luzerne County from the start of this pandemic. And, you know, while I appreciate everybody, what we're trying to do here, we, we can't lose sight of the fact that we're still fighting this. Um, and, uh, it's, it's most important to try to get the information up there. We've had the fourteen deaths, uh, in the past day. Though some of those deaths were, were because of, that happened in the last couple of days, but still, fifty deaths are, are, are an absolute, uh, you know, it's a disaster here in, in Luzerne County for those, for those families. Uh, and our thoughts and prayers goes out to our own Luzerne County citizens who are now passing away. Um, and we are still at the fifth-highest county in the state, uh, with regard to this coronavirus. So I'm going to be trying to get every dime we possibly can from the feds and, uh, the states on these things. Um, I have been, I am aware of those, those federal dollars allocated for elections. Um, I do think that we will be dipping into those, um, and when we do have a clear plan on the CDBG money, we'll, we'll inform council what's going on.
Thanks for all you do. We, we're busy like twenty-four hours a day, so thanks on that, well. And, you know, let us know if, if we need to, to speak with the higher electeds, you know, we're happy to do that, and, uh, and whatever needs you have in any specific areas.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
I have something for Mr. Pedri, but whoever went in just now, go ahead.
It's, uh, Steve, so. Uh, Mr. Pedri, I was wondering if you could put a, a running report together on, on, you know, the deaths themselves and like, uh, maybe from the first patient through the most current, um, regarding age and, and obviously gender. I know it's been like in the newspaper quite a bit, and then, um, obviously, uh, whether it's a nursing home or outside the nursing home environment, so we have a clearer picture of, of where these deaths, uh, or the residents, you know. I, understandably, my heart goes out to every patient that has passed, but, uh, want to put it also in some type of, uh, you know, more of a perspective of, you know, where they're occurring. If, you know, eighty percent of them, are they occurring from nursing homes, and, and should we be taking additional action as a county, uh, to protect those residents?
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's a good point. Um, I have been informing the papers. They, they, unfortunately, they, I have the, the duty of, they contact me every day, um, to, to talk about these things. In fact, I asked them to kind of, can I do this once a week? Because I kind of felt like the Grim Reaper. Uh, however, the, the papers did ask, and they did, and I did respond to them. I said, you know, they, they won't get that information out to the public, but if we are to do like a one comprehensive list, it would be easy for, for everybody to see. I would say the majority of these, Mr. Urban, do fall within our, our, our nursing homes, unfortunately. Um, and, uh, our nursing homes are, are the hardest era-hit areas, uh, that, that we've been seeing, uh, here. But that's a, a good suggestion. I'll take a look at that.
I mean, and then has the state developed any plan in cleaning up these nursing homes, disinfecting them, or, 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 you know, providing additional services to the nursing homes, since that were, that's pretty much predominantly where the, the underlying issue is, you know, our most vulnerable, um, individuals?
Yeah, I mean, like, that's, I mean, over sixty-five with, uh, with, with pre-existing conditions. They're finding them there in a, in a closed, uh, in a, in a closed area, and, um, I would say that my calls with the Department of Health, a lot of them have been talking more and more about nursing homes. That's a really good point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
Uh, yes. Um, Dave, I asked you for a employee database, and I know you've been really busy. If you would look at your email and, and possibly get that from Mr. Parsnick and send it to me, I would appreciate that. Um, it says in the employee policy, you would have a database somewhere. If they could shoot that off to me, I would appreciate that. I did send you an email, so you probably got lost in all the stuff that you get during the day. Uh, the other question I have is, have we had, can you give us an update on what the task, on the task forces, uh, have been doing? I know myself being on the emergency one, uh, working with Mr. Lombardo was nice. I mean, we've, we've gotten some, some things accomplished there, but if you could give, uh, the council a report on how your task force is doing, and as well as, could you give us a report on if Maverick, Maverick Strategies are doing anything to try and help us along the way funding-wise?
Uh, sure. Well, I mean, on the, the task force, uh, I'm going to have a, a full analysis of, of all the committees that, that have been in place and get something out of the media on that. Um, all of them have been doing a great job. In fact, our facilities group, which Kendra Radell's on, um, uh, just was able to work with Lamar, uh, advertising to get us free advert, free advertisements, uh, for outdoor advertising, uh, getting information out there, um, as well. So that's, that's a, a big success that they, uh, they just stepped in on. Um, I'm working on some other stuff as well. Uh, talked to Ms. Haltay on the education committee. Uh, we'll have a full and complete analysis as to what every, every committee's doing and the steps that people are in place. Uh, I was really impressed with the, uh, the finance techs, uh, committee's information that was put out there in that webinar. I thought that was a great touch, and, uh, Ms. McDermott's leadership, uh, on the, uh, on the, the, the private sector has been pretty impressive, too, about getting information out, onto that Facebook page, as well as our public outreach side of things. But I'll put together a full analysis on that. I was actually talked to Kyle Alfred Simmons from, um, the, uh, from, from Maverick Strategies today. Uh, we're putting in for about a two-million-dollar multimodal grant, uh, to PennDOT, uh, for a complete, uh, road, you know, review of our, of River Street and, and Water Street and the, the courthouse parking lot. Uh, so I was talking to him today about that, uh, but they have been engaged, and I have been working with them throughout this entire process.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, moving right down to number five and six, really together. Mr. Griffith?
Uh, well, in light of all the discussion that we've had about code review committees, the only thing I want to say about the whole issue, and I don't even want to bring these, these two items on the agenda at, at the moment, what I would really like to encourage is if, and I know Linda's on the line, if we could get a meeting together and we put a timeline on getting these code things done, so we don't have any of this pushback from the Office of Law on, on things that we're trying to get done on council, I would rather try to get this done as quickly and expeditiously as possible, and, and, and give the Office of Law a timeframe when they can answer our concerns and our code reviews, because I think that seems to be the, I know they're busy. I know everybody's busy, but when we sit down to the code committee review and kick these things around and try and get everything down as best we can, we can't wait for months for the Office of Law to get back to us to say, we don't like this clause. So if we could get together as a code review committee and, and do these things and get these out of the way and get them off the agenda and move along, it would be very helpful. I appreciate, I appreciate the input that the council has on these things, but the committee needs to look at them and get them on the table, get them voted on, and, and move along with this, the administrative code, the personnel code, the ethics code. All these things must be done, and they should be done quickly. So if we could get started on that, I know we've been in an emergency, but we still could have our meetings. So I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, public comment? I have nothing in the Q and A.
Hello?
Go ahead. Who's, who's speaking, please?
Uh, Mr. Mantle.
Go ahead.
I'm still here. All right. The public, the public comment that I wanted to make, uh, was, I had, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Mantle.
Okay. The public comment that I wanted to make in regards to the, uh, the election, uh, situation, I did, I, I think I spoke to you and I spoke to everybody about it. I did go to the, to that office, and they said that they were not allowing anybody upstairs. And I spoke to the, the head of the, the Election Bureau. She did call me, and she apologized, but I'm only one person. What about the people's Joe Schmo's that aren't involved with, with the, with the county council that don't have the opportunity to get ballots? And I mean, that's, uh, that, that to me is a constitutional right that people have, that we have to be able to get those ballots to vote. I mean, the coronavirus is a very important thing, and people are really, uh, getting, uh, hurt and, and dying from this, but you have to have a constitutional right to let people vote. And, and, and I, I just don't think that, that that's going to be fair by putting this all into the hands of a, an envelope that anybody can fill out and send in. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? I have nothing on my email. I have nothing in the Q and A.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sneak. Go ahead.
Uh, at this time, I'd like to thank the county manager, uh, for dispersing, uh, the Sheriff's Department to the city of Hazelton. Uh, everybody knows on the news, Hazelton's a hotspot, and, uh, those sheriffs have, have been deeply appreciated for all the hard work that they have been put in. And while I'm on that, uh, I think I could speak for my ten colleagues. I'd like to thank, uh, all the employees of Luzerne County Corrections, Children and Youth, Sheriff's Department, et cetera, uh, for all the hard work they have been put through, and most of them are, are meeting, those agencies are meeting face-to-face with people that, uh, I just want to thank them for all the hard work that they have, uh, done during this dangerous period of time.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just like to say.
And make a motion we adjourn.
Uh, who was that? Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sneak? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposition or attention? Okay. Thank you. Stay safe. We will be meeting Tuesday night, the twenty-eighth, six oh one.
Yeah, everybody stay healthy.
Stay healthy is right.
Be safe, everybody.
Be safe. Goodbye.
Yeah, be safe, everybody.
Take care.
Hi, cookie lady. Hi, cookie lady.